Time is 6 o'clock PM. It is Tuesday, January 16th. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call her on.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo? Heiser? Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up is, I have the wrong agenda. I apologize. Next up is citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? I have Mr. Coleman registered to speak.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Edward Coleman. I'm the managing member of FM 158 Land LTD. First off, I would like to commend the city council for being able to obtain the six lots from the Quail Ridge subdivision so that Go Fourth Road can be built. I think it'll be a great asset to the community. That being said, the project is going to have a significant impact on the drainage in the area because FM 158's proximity to the project, it is critical that we be part of the conversations to ascertain that the drainage will not negatively impact our land. Thus far, our prior requests have been kept, to be kept appraised of the planning, have been ignored. Moving forward, we would ask that those involved in the planning include us in the future so that problems may be discussed and avoided as part of the planning process. Critical to the discussions, FM 158 Land is in the middle of an ongoing reclamation project, meaning that the land that was previously mine is in the process of being reclaimed as a developable piece of land. The city staff, the city council members, the developers, Michael Schroeder, associates, associated entities are being put on notice that no one has been given permission to divert or discharge any storm water onto FM 158's land. Texas law specifically prohibits illegal diversion of water onto a neighboring property. The damages that FM 158 would suffer as a result of any illegal diversion of water would destroy the property as to both its current status as well as the ability to continue the reclamation of the project for the land which is, as a permitted quarry operator, I am entitled to do under the law. According to the LaSalle Mudd District Number One meeting that took place on January 11th, 2024, the city of Kyle is working with LaSalle Mudd and Limestone Creek developers to update the agreement regarding roadway and drainage improvements in this area. The two current agreements that you have in place now spell out the diversion of water and show the storm water being point sourced onto FM 158's land. Once again, according to Texas Water Code 11.068, this is an illegal act. At this advanced stage of development, the city of Kyle's engineers have told us that they do not know where they will drain the Limestone Creek storm water. Additionally, we have pressed the developers engineer, Duset Engineering, and they do not have a solution to the LaSalle Mudd or Limestone Creek drainage. It is hard to believe that no plan is in place at this time for the discharge of the storm water. We have studied the area with my engineers and attorneys to understand our rights as an impacted quarry operator, property owner. The city staff, the council, the developers, Mike Schroeder Group should be advised of the following. By averting storm water, the way that the former city manager described it in a city council meeting on December 15th, 2020, item number 24, the additional plans that we have obtained that describe the LaSalle berm as a diversion berm, you will run the risk of compromising the Enterprise Gas Pipeline Gate Distribution Facility located inside the LaSalle diversion berm, and two, it will flood 300 acres of our valuable land that I plan to develop in the future. We are not here to be a roadblock to development. However, we cannot and will not allow the city of Kyle or the developers to illegally divert and point source their storm water onto FM 158's land and destroy our very valuable property for the benefit of other parties' concern. Basically, we are asking that everyone be neighborly as the community continues to grow. We believe that open communication and proper planning, devastating problems can be avoided and all while allowing this successful development. We look forward to a response as the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. Want to read it? Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, settlement agreement, or to seek the advice of the city attorney, attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code, and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct. Remind me, do I have to read the individual bullets there?
Yeah, one, two, and four.
Okay. Here, I have to read this too? I've done a good job of not having to read this. City of Kyle application for major amendment to TPDES permit number WQ 0011041002 for the wastewater treatment facility located at 941 Newbridge Drive in Hayes County, Texas, 78640. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purposes. Purchase of property for simply city facilities and public purposes. Acquisition of property for transportation improvements or related infrastructure. Pursuant personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the office of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project lying king. Back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There'll be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03 PM. It is Tuesday, January 16th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with its faith, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Rizzo.
Heiser?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have three registered to speak. First up, Joshua McBride.
I don't know if it was that well, but it helps with what I'm going to say. So hello. My name is Joshua McBride. I'm a citizen of Kyle and a business owner as well. Back in September, I presented a video to the city communications director, Rachel, about Button Creek specifically at the intersection of Lehman Road, and how it backs up every day 1.7 miles. So 3,000 homes use that vital road every day, and the lights that are at the intersection can be easily tweaked to speed it up, basically. So in the video, it talks about just a small adjustment to the lighting pattern, which will save quite a lot of time. So if you're leaving one of four neighborhoods on Button Lane, and you're just trying to get past Lehman Road at Lehman High School, it takes you 13 minutes and 54 seconds, and that's only 1.7 miles. By doing the small tweak to the lighting pattern, that time gets dropped to 52 seconds. Doesn't put anybody in danger. It would be clearly marked. And there was supposed to be some adjustments made after the temporary lights went in. That didn't happen. It's been the same for the past year. And so what that adds up to each year is two days and eight hours, that people are sitting in idle or moving less than two miles an hour. So if I came to you and said, hey, if I could give you back two days and 16 hours or eight hours, what would you do with your time? Everybody would love extra time. And sitting in idle is not very fun. But I know there's a roundabout proposed there, and this is just a temporary fix until that roundabout is completed, which is two years from now. So take that two days and eight hours, multiply it, you have four days and 16 hours of just sitting in idle, when just a small adjustment could be made to the lights to allow it to be drastically reduced. And that's all I'm asking. But I would like to submit the new video to Rachel when I can. But thank you for your time and congratulations on your new win.
Thank you. All right, next up, Patty Anne Reed.
I, excuse me, I am not a citizen of Kyle, but I am a citizen of Hayes County, and I want to thank you, the council members and the mayor, for allowing me to come before you today. I am the overall coordinator for the POINT and TIME Count. By its acronym, PIT Count, it's a count of people experiencing homelessness, both sheltered and unsheltered on a single day in January. It is a snapshot of homelessness in our community, and we are including all the communities, Buda, Buta, Kyle, Wimberly, Dripping Springs, and San Marcos in our surveyors that are going to go out looking for homeless. Sheltered includes people living in an emergency shelter or a transitional shelter, housing for less than 90 days. Unsheltered includes people living in a place not meant for human habitation, like streets, under bridges, vacant buildings, encampments, et cetera. The PIT Count is under the umbrella of the Homeless Coalition of Hayes County and is coordinated by the Texas Homeless Network. January 25th is the day of the count for 2024. The unsheltered count will take place from 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and the sheltered count will be completed in that evening. The annual PIT homeless count and survey is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for the local continuum of care funding process. The count illustrates trends over time, increases or decreases in homelessness, and provides insights to the effectiveness of the community's housing program and homelessness service. This is the fifth year of Hayes County participating in the PIT Count. The PIT Count team is now reaching out to all communities in the county to get a better understanding of the homelessness in the entire county, not just San Marcos, and a strategic plan will be completed to address these needs. The PIT Count is informing the city councils of Buta, Dripping Springs, Wimberly, and of course Kyle. We are not asking for anything. We just wanted you to be in the know that this is going to take place, and over the past five years, it's gotten more press coverage in Travis County and in Hayes County. And it's just really important because many from what goes to HUD can come back to people in Hayes County, Kyle, to write grants, to bring money to help the homeless. So I do have a flyer. May I give those to you? And thank you for letting me have your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is Ellen Ermas.
Hi, my name is Ellen Ermas, and I'm the Director of Communications for the Kyle Area Senior Zone. I write their grants and work with their newsletters. I've left one for each of you with Jennifer. I also usually put them in your mailbox up here. We wanted to remind you that the MLK event that was scheduled Monday is now rescheduled for tomorrow, 3:00 to 5:00 at the library, and we appreciate all that the library and their staff is doing to collaborate with us on different activities. Also tomorrow at Willie's, they're having a CAS spirit event. So if you would eat at Willie's tomorrow, they'll give us 15% if you mention it. Also later on the agenda, number four, you'll be considering me for the Parks and Recreation Board. And though I don't usually like to talk about myself, I thought that maybe this was a quick time to do that. In the 80s, I worked for the city of San Antonio for marketing and sales, for Alamo Area Council of Governments, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, where I began with philanthropy and grants, grant management. Then in the 90s, until I retired, I worked for Texas State and volunteered on many nonprofit boards, earned a master's through Recreation and Health Administration for intergenerational programming to fight age segregation in our communities, and focused on philanthropy and grant management there. I served on the Como County Parks Board, and we built the Hidden Valley Sports Park, Jumbo Evans Sports Park, and I was on the Community Resource and Recreation Center Board there for 15 years, wrote grants and researched for these parks, for the Kyle Area Senior Zone, and for the Empty Cross in Kerrville. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. That is all the citizen comments forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, citizen comments is now closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any requests to move any of the items around? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to appointments. Agenda item number three, consider approval of a resolution confirming the city manager's reappointment of Stuart Kirkwood to the Civil Service Commission to fill a three-year term to expire July 31st, 2026. Ms. Spencer.
Good evening, mayor, council. For the record, I am Kristiana Spencer, Civil Service Director. The Civil Service Commission is responsible for adopting, maintaining, and enforcing rules governing the hiring and promotional process and services, and serves as the disciplinary appeal board for our civil service employees in the Kyle Police Department. The commissioners serve a staggered three-year term and meet on an as-needed basis. The commission currently has two vacancies, and interviews for the remaining vacancies are scheduled. Staff is recommending approving the reappointment of Stuart Kirkwood to the Civil Service Commission in order to maintain a quorum and retain knowledge and experience until the remaining vacancy on the commission is filled. Stuart Kirkwood has served on the commission since April of 2017, and he brings valuable knowledge and experience. And his commission, if approved, will expire July 31st of 2026.
All right, thank you, Ms. Spencer. Does anybody have any questions, motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Stuart Kirkwood to the Civil Service Commission for a three-year term.
Second. All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve Mr. Kirkwood to the Civil Service Commission. Is there a discussion on the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Kristiana. It's also been brought to my attention, we have some new formatting on our, and I missed the minutes. So we need to go back to the minutes. Agenda item number one for December 19th.
Let's go ahead and approve agenda item number one, minutes for city council meeting December 19th, special meeting December 19th, and the meetings for January the 2nd, 2024, regular and special meetings.
The second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes. Is there a discussion on that motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Now we'll go to agenda item four, consider approval of a resolution approving the appointment of Ellen Ennis to seat one of the Parks and Recreation Board. Ms. Espinosa.
Mayor and council, Mariana Espinosa, Parks and Recreation Director. The Parks and Recreation Board vacancies were posted online between September 17th and October 29th. They were posted on social media, on our Facebook page. Six applications were received, six applicants were contacted, four were interviewed. Two of those applicants were previously appointed at the November 20th city council meeting. The interview panel, myself, Councilmember Parsley, and Assistant City Manager Jerry Hendricks requested to use the same pool to fill this vacancy as well. We would like to recommend appointment of Ellen Ermas to fill seat one of the Parks and Recreation Board. And so Ellen's already gone over all my notes I had about her, but one thing we really did want to also add is she's actively involved in the Kyle Area Senior Zone CAS as well, and we recommend appointment of Ms. Ellen.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
I think she will be a great asset. That was a great interview. So we're excited to have you, Ellen.
Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Ellen Ennis to the seat one of the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Harris, that we approve Ellen Ermas to the Parks Board. Is there a discussion on the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next up is agenda item number five, consider approval of a resolution appointing Rose Burke to seat five and Fabiana Melendez Ruiz to seat seven of the Arts and Cultural Board. Ms. Schmaitz.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem and council. Amber Schmaitz, Assistant City Manager for the record. Tonight, we are asking for appointments to seats five and seven on the Arts and Cultural Board. We are asking, seat five is a citizen community representative, and seat seven is the business community representative for terms expiring on September 30th, 2025. There was an interview panel made up of the mayor pro tem, myself, and Kayla Sharp, and we interviewed two candidates, which we are presenting to you for tonight. Requirements for appointment, they have to be over 18 years of age, they have to be a resident of Kyle, and then the business community representative must own or be employed by a business in the city of Kyle or its ETJ. For seat five, we are recommending Ms. Rose Burke. She's a resident of Kyle for three years. She's an active member of the community and current vice president of the Plum Creek HOA. She has, excuse me, a passion for bringing arts and culture to the city of Kyle, and she's a certified public accountant. And for seat seven, we are asking you to appoint Ms. Fabiana Melendez Ruiz. She's a resident of Kyle. She's an active member of the community. She works in marketing and PR with connections to Austin arts and music scene. She's passionate about arts and culture, and she's a business owner here in Kyle. The composition of the board is seven members. They served staggered two-year terms. There are currently three vacancies, and the meetings are held once a month on the Thursday at 7:00 PM. Your options tonight are to approve or deny, and we recommend that you appoint Ms. Rose to seat five and Ms. Fabiana to seat seven.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schmaitz. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Councilwoman Parsley.
So I personally know Ms. Rose Burke, and I have heard wonderful things she had to say when she is, and I don't know if you're currently serving with the Red Wing Arts and Boards Commission, so I think she would be fantastic to work with our Arts and Cultural Board for the city of Kyle.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say something about Fabiana. She seems like a really energetic person, has a lot of great ideas. I think she's going to be a great addition to this board. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve Rose Burke to seat five and Fabiana Melendez Ruiz to seat seven of the Arts and Cultural Board.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve Ms. Fabiana Melendez Ruiz and Rose Burke to the Arts and Cultural Commission Board. Is there a discussion on the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, reports and presentation. Announce and invite the community to the upcoming MLK celebration and community event partnership with city of Kyle and Hayes ISD at the Performing Arts Center on January 27th, 2024. Councilwoman Zuniga.
Oh, thank you, mayor and council. So actually, this is going to be on January 28th, Sunday at 2:00. So I want to start off by just saying that this item has been brought forward because the city of Kyle and Hayes School District ISD and the Diversity Advisory Committee are sponsoring a special MLK program, January 28th, at the PAC Center. The program will be a community event to honor and reflect on the contributions and work of MLK and other civil rights leaders. Yesterday was MLK birthday, and it's a day to evaluate our role and relationship with community service, to learn and understand how each one of us can make a difference to support our friends and our neighbors. The benefits from the civil rights movement came from many struggles and sacrifices made by MLK and other prominent activists before and during their time period. It's important for every American to learn about the civil rights period because of the many examples of how large coalitions of members of society join together in nonviolent protests, and how even against great odds, they sustain the movement for equality and progress. The civil rights movement also demonstrates how the right education can be used as a powerful tool for social reform and legislative change. It reminds us that when we work collectively for social progress to benefit everyone, we can create a more equal and fair society. So this is an invitation to the entire community to please come out and support the MLK program by listening to our talented schoolchildren as they read personal essays and stories about what MLK and other civil rights leaders signify and mean to them. The theme of the MLK program this year is reflections on his dream. Furthermore, the atmosphere of the MLK program will be inspiring, motivational, and educational, and once again, a reminder of how we can help others and improve our community together. Thank you. Just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Zuniga. Does anybody have any comments or anything to add on that? All right, we're going to move on. Next up is agenda item number seven, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding legislative priorities and strategic advocacy. Mr. Tucker with Aiken Gump.
Good evening, everyone, and I send communication from my colleague Jorge Brujón, who is en route, and despite a 5:00 AM start time today, has had a cascade of delays and will land in Austin in approximately five minutes, but will join us as soon as he can get here. It's great to be back, and certainly we enjoyed our conversations with members of council in December as we heard feedback on your priorities and what you would like to see going forward. And so tonight is an opportunity for us to share the feedback that we heard from you and what we've done to date, and what we would like your feedback and buy-in going forward. As you will recall, Aiken is a Texas firm founded in the 50s. We're now the largest policy practice in Washington and have had the privilege of working with the city of Kyle since late 2021. And throughout that time, we've been pursuing federal funding, both through the congressional appropriations process and through grant funding available through the federal agencies. We've been successful in securing $2 million through the appropriations process for the Purple Line. We have another $1 million tagged for that project in pending legislation that Congress, had they done their homework, would have finished October 1st. It is now looking like it will be extended, as we speak this week, to a March 1st deadline. So hopefully they have final resolution on that part of the project. As we've worked throughout the process as well, we've had several grant opportunities where we pursued funding at agencies for the Vibe Project, for the Kohler's Crossing rail reciting and overpass, as well as the Purple Line Project. Each of these have been very successfully rated on the merits, got into the secretary's office for consideration, but so far... office for consideration, but so far not yet successful, but we are pursuing particularly the Kohler's Crossing at this point for a live opportunity with a submission expected in early February. So based on the conversations we had with each of you back in December, and sort of collating what we heard, proposing an agenda for your consideration and for your direction that would continue the focus on the Kohler's project, water on the Purple Line, both in terms of Purple Line, as well as some longer-term water planning issues, as well as some focus on public spaces, be it the continuation of the Vibe, we heard from some of you about parks and senior centers, as well as smart infrastructure and illumination. So go through quickly each of these projects, one by one, although I think y'all are largely familiar with each of them, but just quickly to make sure everybody's on the same page. Is the Kohler Crossing rail siding project, which is really involves two phases. One is working through the rail line, and the second piece is then doing the overpass. I'll pause there for just any comments and questions about that particular project as a priority. I'll take your lead, Mayor, in terms of where to go with each of these projects.
Does anybody have any questions on the rail siding? No, it's a project we've been pursuing for, you know, many years since twenty sixteen, so glad to see the efforts continuing.
Yeah, and there's a theme we heard from these conversations, that the east-west connectivity, both with Kohler's and with the one fifty bypass, is something that is vital here. We will pursue both the congressional piece and the grant piece for these projects. Rewinding the tape a little bit back, when we first were brought on board, we started working with then Congressman Doggett, who was the constituent representative for Kyle at the time, his recommendation was to look for projects outside of roads and highways because of the very competitive nature of those projects, both nationally for the entire bill, and within the district. And so that was one of the focuses, the impetuses for focusing on the water infrastructure, which is in a different bill that funds the EPA. When the lines were redrawn, we picked up Congressman Cassar as the representative for the district. He pursued appropriations process for both the Purple Line project and for the Kohler's Crossing. He submitted it, when we heard back from the Appropriations Committee, they funded the Purple Line, but not the Kohler's project, which I think underscores the point that Mr. Doggett was making about the competitive nature in that, in that particular account. The one fifty overpass south of the city, again, part of that east-west connectivity, will be something that we will focus on probably in sequence after we get the Kohler's first done through grant process, and so the grant process would be the most attractive way of looking at funding for this particular project. Purple Line, as I mentioned, we've got a million dollars in the earmark pending, in the pending appropriations process. We had a Bureau of Reclamation, Department of Interior grant that got very favorable feedback and that we will reapply once they have that funding allocated for the agency. One of the conversations we had was the need to look at what are issues regionally on a longer-term basis, and which the city of Kyle would be one of many stakeholders, and this is a topic that we have gone to Congressman Cassar's office about, seeing if they would be a convener of the various entities that would need to be part of that conversation, but beginning to look at issues, given the growth and given the demand, on a fifty-plus year basis. Public spaces, the Vibe Trail, I think folks are familiar with, we do recognize that there's substantial funding provided for the Vibe through the bonding process, but we also heard from folks around parks and recreational facilities and potential senior center, and so we'll be working with the city to try to identify those projects that are ripe and mature for submission around grant opportunities that will exist through the Department of Interior, and perhaps some through HUD around those kinds of projects. Lastly, smart infrastructure and illumination will be an area that we will take a look at, and again, that will be a grant-funded opportunity through the SMART program over at DOT. So I will pause there for just feedback on the collective of those presentations and anything that you want to add from the conversations from a few weeks ago.
Does anybody have any commentary at this point or feedback? All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Brian, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so we wanted to bring this forward after talking to Mr. Tucker and the Aiken Gump firm, if I could have you come back, we might have some questions. We wanted to make sure we're focusing on the right priorities, the right legislative priorities for the council. I know Mr. Tucker had a number of individual conversations with the council, as he mentioned before. These are things that are important to the council, we'll be trying to put together a program for National League of Cities, which will be up in early March. I know some of you may be coming to that particular event, we'll be trying to make sure that some staff is there with Mr. Tucker's office to also go to some of the various federal agencies and advocate for these particular priorities. So we wanted to make sure these are the priorities that are important to the council. I think, just reading the council through the discussion, I think these are that we kind of hit on the ones that are there, but if there are anything else that you'd like to see, it's important for us to know that. We also have a contract with Aiken Gump that expired at the end of December, and so we need to have some type of extension over the next few months to have us go through that process and look at how we continue working with them. So that's really the purpose today, is to get this in front of you, make sure we're focusing on the right things, and get some direction of how you want to proceed.
Well, let me also add as well, one of the things with the feedback we got, apart from the substance of the project specific, I think there was some visibility amongst members of council about some of the things we were doing, but I don't think there was complete visibility about everything that we were doing, and so I think we're going to work on a process to communicate. For instance, we track all federal grants across all federal agencies on a weekly basis. I go through and I try to identify what's relevant to Kyle, even flagging sums that are like, I don't think I've ever heard anything talked about in this national endowment for humanities grant, but just I'm flagging it in case there's somebody in the community that where it would be relevant. And so working with Brian and now with Jesse, who I think is going to have a portfolio that includes intergovernmental activities, trying to foster better visibility for you guys to see what it is that we're involved with, because I think there was awareness around the two million dollars for the Purple Line, but I think people were not aware of the grant activity for Vibe, for Purple Line, and for the rail crossing. So we will be working on putting that into practice.
Appreciate that, I think that's, would be a helpful pursuit. So it's important for the council to understand where we are at all points in time with regards to these projects we're trying to pursue, and so that communication will go a long way, for sure. Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Tucker and for coming out a few weeks ago and getting impact in from the council, it was really, felt really important that we share what's important to us and our communities, and what we're looking for funding for, and it's infrastructure, that's usually what we're looking for, but seeing that rail siding moving north of us one day is going to be exciting, because I've been stopping at that train for about fifty-four years, as before I was driving, you know, I remember my parents being in the car and saying, well, there's a train again, got to wait for the train, but it's going to be great to maybe get some funding and get that rail siding relocated. It's something I think all Kyle's been waiting for.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So I guess one of the things that I would like to give us a feedback is, like, I think I mentioned this to you guys, I would like to have better communication between, you know, Aiken Gump and us. I feel like we went through extended periods of time that we wouldn't hear anything, and I know a lot of different factors play into that, but I would like better communication and being more responsive. I know at a time, I messaged somebody and I didn't get a response for like weeks, so I think those things matter, I would like to see what is going on. And I discussed this with you guys before, like, you know, if there is a grant that has been highlighted, that may apply to the city of Kyle, maybe getting a report is something we discuss, maybe getting a report once a month on what the activities have been, for us to know where the money is coming from, like, you know, is it worth it for us to continue with you guys or not?
Yeah, so for your awareness, we have a bi-weekly call with staff, where we're going through an agenda, where we're looking at these projects, looking at where Congress is in its process, where the agencies are in that process, so we will work to get this information shared with council and disseminated on a more broad basis. Yes?
So a quick question, how often in the year are you able to get funding for these projects? Is it a one-time appropriation, where if you don't get it, you have to wait next year?
Yeah, it's essentially an annual cycle, both on the appropriations process and then on the grant process, and so the congressional process, even though they haven't finished last year's process, typically, we will be putting a submission before the delegation, and in this case, it's really Mr. Cassar, in a March timeframe, and it may be that we are pursuing multiple asks with the recognition that he may select one or two. The grant process, again, is informed by Congress passing a budget bill, so that, for instance, Department of Treasury knows how much money it has to fund grants.
Right.
And so it will say, it will do a raise grant, which is the most applicable for the Kohler's project, or there are two rail-specific grant programs, those happen on an annual basis, but they tend to stagger, so like the two rail-related grants, one called the Rail Crossing Elimination Act, CRIA, and then the other one is called CRISI, it's like Consolidated Rail Infrastructure Security, anyway, so CRIA and CRISI typically move about three months apart from one another. The eligibility criteria are roughly the same, we should apply for both, knowing that we've got, you know, one annual shot at each of those, but we can take two shots in a year.
So the only concern that I have is that we did receive two million and a one million earmark, but those are kind of, those are connected to the bad drought that we've had. So did it really take that level of extreme weather to kind of push that, to get us that money, because that doesn't show very good, I guess, from where I see it. I feel like if we're not under that extreme pressure, would the money have still flowed? I mean, it's tied to water, and we went through a really, we still are in the stage three.
Right, right, but I think there are also longer-term growth-driven issues that create demand here, for which this is a, one of several solutions to it, and I think, starting with Mr. Doggett, and then subsequently with Mr. Cassar, they saw value in the project and put it forward before the Appropriations Committee for their consideration.
I still think the one fifty bypass, I definitely need it, and the Kohler's underpass, so still great, good ones to go for.
That's helpful.
All right, any additional thoughts or commentary? All right, we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, next up, agenda item number eight, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding planning efforts related to the April twenty twenty four total eclipse. Been hearing the wildest stories about just descending hordes upon the city of Kyle, is that what we're in store for?
There is a website now, sorry, Will Pies Tavasch, emergency management coordinator for the record, there is a website now called the Great American Eclipse, if you want to go there, they do have projected models. I think it bottoms out at two hundred and something thousand people visiting our area to see the eclipse, and it tops out at like over a million, so the numbers are pretty heavy. I personally don't understand the appeal, I will be spending the eclipse in the EOC looking at traffic instead of the moon, but that's just me. I think I pulled, no, I pulled this over from Eclipse Over Texas twenty twenty four, but we have an eclipse coming up, minor details, April eighth, one thirty, unfortunately, this is right before school lets out, it's in the middle of a workday, and what happens when a million visitors come here, or even two hundred and fifty thousand visitors come here, is they tend to bring cars and trailers and other things that our roads are just not equipped to handle on that scale. This is Oregon twenty seventeen, the last total eclipse in the United States. State police recorded over five hundred thousand vehicles on their interstate, that's seventy-five going north-south. It became bad enough, the National Guard were activated to help clear roadways, because with that many cars, there's always so much fuel to go around, people break down, just the usual maintenance issues arise. We're going to experience the same thing. With all these people, there's going to be an increased demand for service, whether it's nine-one-one, scrapes, you know, I fell in the park and twisted my ankle, I need to go to the ER real quick, all the normal stuff that happens, there will just be more of it, if that makes sense. Oregon reported the same thing, calls for nine-one-one increased, comms were overwhelmed, we have a finite number of cellular towers here. What they saw was there were so many people on each cell network that the networks just didn't work. Here in the city of Kyle, we do have the PSC, we have ham backup, we have landline backup, we will be able to maintain emergency communications via radio. If cell goes down, the emergency services should still be okay, however, coupled with what we saw on the slide before, when school lets out and all these buses are out on the road, and parents are thinking their kids are going to be home in thirty minutes, an hour, whatever, they're still in the bus four hours later, because there's so much traffic, as people try to leave this eclipse, and much like a football game, they're going to trickle in, you know, day, two days, three days ahead of time, they're all going to leave once it's over, and it's a four-minute event. So we're going to have just a bunch of folks clogging up the roadways, waiting for, you know, the highway to clear up, for them to move ten feet forward, and the buses are in that. So I expect we're going to get a lot of phone calls from parents wondering where their kids are, why they never made it home from school, and dispatch is going to be in contact with the school district about where their buses are. This was a two-minute event in Oregon, and that is the campsite, there's even a festival tent set up. This is apparently a major tourist draw. Tennessee also impacted in twenty seventeen, like I just said, arrival is distributed. They had the unfortunate incidence of fires. It was dry enough there, and we experienced the same kind of fire conditions here, cars parking along the side of the highway and tall grass, they're, I'm forgetting the thing on the bottom of the car, the converter, catalytic converter gets hot enough to ignite the grass and kick that off. Same thing, cell network's completely overwhelmed. Now, we're not just predicting that this many people are going to show up, I did go, I checked, and all the other emergency managers in the area, we're looking at hotel bookings, you can get a room maybe at the Hampton Inn here for like four ninety-nine to eight ninety-nine a night. Everything's booked out, RV sites are booked out, Airbnb's are booked out, Buta echoes this, Dripping Spring echoes this, Wimberly echoes this. We have a major thoroughfare going out west, that's where the area of totality is going to be, Wimberly is going to be a prime spot to see it, and as you know, you can just take one fifty out there and get to Wimberly past the Hays City Store. If you, if visitors who cannot access that are probably just going to park along one fifty, is what my anticipation is going to be. I thirty-five has always been a parking lot, it will continue to remain so. Catrak is also working with us on preparedness, Catrak is the Regional Advisory Commission for hospitals and health agencies, EMS services. They have recommended ISD's close, every ISD in our area has committed to closing, with the exception of Hays CIST, they remain open, they wish to remain open. The county has asked these schools to close because we need the additional sheriff's officers, sheriff's deputies to conduct traffic, and we want to keep the buses off the roads. Sun Coast has been contracted by the state for emergency fuel, we ourselves have been in contact with MACRO to try and get emergency fuel for our generators, we may have to rely on that to try and get our police vehicles fueled. And I will be at the EOC for the event, PD is going to all hands, chief is not here, but he wanted to communicate, PD will be ready, they will be working to ensure traffic flows, FD is prepared to stage. For those who are unaware, fire department usually stays at the station, it's rare that they stage out in the field, they expect traffic will be bad enough that they will have vehicles distributed throughout our area, they will not just be waiting at the station. I have provided a memo, so there is a more comprehensive list of activities in there. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Will? Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, just, Will, just real quick, have we gotten with the county and other municipalities to make sure that we cut all those roadways, to make sure the grass is not tall when they park on the sides due to the catalytic converters?
Yes, we have been meeting regularly with the county, and we've also been having what I'm calling tri-city meetings with Buta and San Marcos.
And what have we done as a city to maintain our roadways?
Well, parks and, well, parks maintains our parks, which is where I expect a lot of people to park. I did not intend for that to come out the way it did, it sounds silly when I say it out loud. We also have streets working on maintaining our own roadways. I cannot guarantee that we will not have severe fire weather conditions, because this is Texas and this will be in the spring. We have had a somewhat wet winter, and unrelated, Paul is here, if he wants to try and address what we're looking at in terms of dryness in the spring, any ideas?
I have no idea right now.
Okay, Paul is from the National Weather Service, he'll be on item number nine. Yeah, so I have no way of knowing how wet it's going to be, we are going to take precautions, and frankly, our public works and our parks people are extremely proactive, it's why we don't have as many issues as other places with these ice storms, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, Will.
Yeah, I thought that was, that's actually a really good point, so, you know, we contract with Brightview to maintain a roadway, so I think it'd be good to be putting this on their radar to make sure that they, you know, do the work, because in the spring, that grass is growing pretty fast, so, good, good idea. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they wish to remove or ask questions on? Councilor Tobias.
Number 12, just ask a question.
All right, any other items? Do you want to ask your question on 12 before we move on?
I have a quick question. If, since we are discussing, we have, you know, storm-ready community, and we're talking, we have a weather person in here. Could I just bring up my item to tag along with nine? They're kind of somehow related.
If you wanted the briefing in the future, if you wanted me to have the briefing in the future, is that the item?
No, well, I mean, since we're talking about.
Twenty-four, item 24, is it the one you're referring to?
Mm-hmm. Now, they're two different things. Never mind. I was just thinking if I could discuss 24 as we are talking about item nine, but they're not really.
And nine is also on consent, so.
Yeah, no, never mind.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items nine through 17, excluding 12 and 15.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, sorry. 12 and 16.
All right, second, motions made by Mayor Protem, seconded by the mayor that we approve consent agenda items nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 17. Is there a discussion on that motion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 12. Consider approval of a resolution acknowledging the Bunton Creek Road Project, serving a public purpose for the public use and establishing the design elements for the roadway. Mr. Cantalupo is here. Mr. Zuniga, do you have a question?
Yes. Hello, Joe.
Evening, Councilmember Mayor.
So on this one, on the key considerations, and I did get the answer back from our city manager, just wanted to hear more details. Specifically, the school district preference to realign driveway at Lehman High School to better match the Lake Washington Drive. Which entrance is that? What does that look like on this road?
The entrance to the school?
Yes, because they have two entrances. They have a south and a, I guess, a northern entrance.
I don't, so it is, I think the best way to describe it, it's in the, more or less in the middle of, oh, here we go.
There's a Bunton entrance, and then there's a Lehman entrance that I'm aware of.
Right.
And so what did they, what did they mean by aligning it?
So it is.
And then also, did we make that accommodation?
The answer is yes, we did make the accommodation. It's in the schematic. And the entire project and the realignment of the driveways to match Lake Washington also include like a whole host of pedestrian improvements, including a crossing where that connection will be. So if you look at the drawing or the aerial, you see it's, if you look to the left of it, if you look at the North Arrow, sort of to the north or west, you'll see that baseball field or that athletic field at the bottom. And it's, I point that out because it's got that red clay. If you just go up from that and you see that big white line, that entrance, that's the road that is going to be realigned to meet Lake Washington, which is the road that is just to the east of that. It's, and you can't see it, but there is a sign that will probably, at the school property, that'll have to be relocated.
Okay, I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, this is all being done in consideration with, in coordination with the school district and at the request.
Thank you, Joe. That's the only question I have.
You're very welcome.
We fulfilled that request.
And if I might add, I believe the school district may be also wanting to extend another road behind where the baseball fields are because of the, like an extra road to go behind it.
So the conversations we're having with the school district, it's not necessarily all going to fall to the project.
Nope.
But the requests, for example, with the coordination we're doing to relocate that road, some of the pedestrian facilities and some of the even crossings that are near the project are all being done in consideration of this bigger capital program plan that the school has. So we met with them, I want to say months ago, to talk about other features of the project. And one of the things we were able to do with them is get more information about some of their planning and how we could use this project to enhance some of the circulation, not only along the road, but also for how the students that walk or even drive can access, you know, different parts of the school. So does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I think that's what it is because of the constant backflow from South Lake Ranch, where you have the cars that are parked there, that add to additional traffic that's when people are trying to leave. Because that's that backlog around 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So I think they're looking at building behind, but that's a district issue. But they're trying to help us in this sense to be able to give us another road driveway.
Good news about this project has to do with the enhancements to pedestrian circulation for the students, right? Not only are we, is the city putting in more infrastructure, but we're also working with the school district to see where we could place additional safe crossings for the kids that come from the neighborhoods, you know, to from the school.
Have to look beyond that.
So it's really turning out well, you know, the coordination we're doing with them on the city's behalf.
Any additional thoughts or comments? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item 12.
Second. All right, motion's made by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. So we approve Agenda Item Number 12. Is there a discussion on that motion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 16. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement and all other documents necessary to effectuate and finalize the purchase of Parcels Five and Six from the Quail Ridge subdivision for Go Fourth Road project on terms discussed in executive session. This is Ms. Schmeit's item, Councilor Tobias, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Ms. Schmeit, just again, like we spoke about earlier, we just have a summary of what's, what's the latest on Quail Ridge.
Yes, sir, absolutely. These are the last two parcels to be acquired through this process. Just some background, again, this is all for the purpose of building South Go Fourth Road. It impacted six properties, and these are the last two parcels. With stateside, our right-of-way agent has been working on our behalf to acquire the property. We have acquired properties one, two, three, and four. They've accepted the offers and signed the MOAs. And then now Parcels Five and Six, we have one property owner. They have accepted the offer and signed the MOA. Oops, too fast. The packages are all different. It just depends on the circumstances and the needs of the owner and tenant, if they're, if they're in there. The total offers for the six impacted properties was $1.759 million. All costs were to be borne by the developer. And then we've discussed these in detail in executive session with you all. Parcels Five and Six are located at 201 Quail Ridge Drive. It's an impacted owner, resident, and landlord. They have a 2,131 square foot, nine-room, five-bedroom, two-bath mobile home on one-acre lot. Proposed acquisition cost based on appraisal and agreement is $265,000. Total estimate to acquire and relocate is $358,040.38. We are asking you to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement and all other documents necessary to effectuate and finalize the purchase of Parcels Five and Six from the Quail Ridge subdivision for this Go Fourth Road project on terms discussed in executive session, subject to review and approval of the form of those documents by the city attorney. Your options are to approve as recommended, approve with modifications to the package offered, or deny. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Again, we all know that this was brought forth last year. It was pretty controversial on the scene, but I'm glad we were able to collaborate with the individuals and the city and all those involved, including our attorneys, to where we could be able to come to a resolution on this. So with that, Mayor Electico, and make a motion to approve item number 16, please.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we approve Agenda Items, Agenda Item Number 16. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, a quick comment.
Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank our city and State Right-of-Way for how transparent and open the whole process was, and our council for having this information and this discussion back and forth. So everybody could see how the process worked out and favorably for the residents living in Quail Ridge as well as the city.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And just to, we never even had to go through the process of condemnation, which was, you know, what happened last year, a lot of misinformation going around. All the property owners accepted offers. There was no, any haggling or any of that sort of thing. So anyway, so it's just appreciated what you guys did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 18. Hold a public hearing. Consider approval of an ordinance for the Call 2030 comprehensive plan. This item does have a public hearing. It's not listed as first reading. I just want to confirm that this item does have two readings. Or would it be finally passed?
Will Atkinson, Director of Planning, for the record. As with most zoning items, it does require two readings. It could be passed and finally approved on first read, if that is something y'all choose to do.
If it's unanimous without objection.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and do the public hearing now if there are no objections. All right, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak?
Mayor Steagall, Planning and Zoning Commissioner, seat four. Good to be here tonight, actually, to just signify that we've passed this on to you for your consideration after all the work we have all done. And just to note that, of course, we approved it unanimously. And we think this was a good thing to have gone through. But really, the reason I'm speaking tonight is not just to encourage you to, to approve it and adopt it, but really to look at the work that it requires. Because really, this, we've gotten to a point in the process where implementation, of course, is what it's all about. And it's going to take communication among all of us here in this room, council, planning and zoning, certainly staff and economic development and planning, to really pull this together. We, we do not hold these seats and these jobs forever, sometimes for very long. And what my desire is to see that we can have an implementation in detail that gives us ongoing structures for making this plan part of the business of the city, both for land use and development, for parks, for fiscal soundness, and also an opportunity to communicate, not just among ourselves, but with the community about what the plans are for the community as well. I think this is a great opportunity to do a code update. And there's going to be a lot of getting off into the weeds with that. Nevertheless, it's just to point out, there's a lot of work ahead of us that I'm encouraged and I'm, you know, actually wanting to do that work so that we can make a difference and that this plan has not just been talk, it's not just been work sessions, but it's something that has a meaningful impact on the community.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Onkin, and I'm also part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. To begin, I just wanted to thank everyone who is part of this initiative. So I wanted to thank the team from Verdunity, the city staff, my fellow commissioners, all of y'all with city council, and all the folks who came out to events, who filled in surveys, who gave us any kind of feedback about their opinions or their concerns. One thing that I really like about this plan is how it articulates and illustrates some of the issues that arise from the development patterns that became normalized over the last century. When I first came before this body to be considered for a seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was one of my biggest concerns and one of my main motivators for wanting to serve on the commission. So I'm quite heartened to see that the implementation actions, that chapter contains several actions about gathering data, about using fiscal analysis to do, to help shape recommendations for, for the city development. So I'm very excited about this plan. And should y'all choose to approve it tonight or on the next read, I hope that we can all really lean into it together and commit to applying those decision-making principles that it talks about and to implementing those actions so we can see where we end up after a good faith effort of trying to make it work. So that's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Atkinson.
Mayor, Council, for the record, I'm Will Atkinson. But I am Jerry Hendrick's Assistant City Manager, and I'd like to take just a moment of your time to introduce two new members of our executive team, both that have connections to planning. I'd like to ask Melissa McCullum to come up. They don't know this is coming, by the way. Melissa is our Chief Development Officer. This is beginning her second week. We're glad she came back over the weekend. She's already hit the ground running, and she is undefeated in comp plans presented to P&amp;Z. So, Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I appreciate the opportunity of being part of Team Kyle. I'm really excited to be here at the city, and I look forward to helping work with not only the Planning and Zoning Commission, but you and fellow staff members on the implementation of this comprehensive plan. So hoping for good things tonight, for sure.
Awesome.
Melissa comes to us from the city of Buta, and we're very happy to have her. And Mike is not talking to me right now. Next up, I'd ask, I'd like to ask Rosie Trulove to come up. Rosie comes to us after 25 years with the city of Austin. Part of her stint there included being Director of Planning and Director of Housing. And she's our new Director of Administrative Services and will be working with Jessie to do lots of great things with procurement and customer service and so on and so forth.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Rosie Trulove. I'm the Director of Administrative Services here. I'm very excited to be part of Team Kyle, just like Melissa said. Happy to chat with you guys about anything and looking forward to getting to know you and your policy objectives. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, I'll return you to your regularly scheduled programming.
Will Atkinson, Director of Planning, for the record. Before we bring up Marshall here, I just wanted to provide a brief introduction and a summary of what we've encapsulated so far in the comprehensive plan. So this has been approximately a year and a half, maybe a little bit more, time that we've all spent together between the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, multiple members of the community, multiple organizations putting together this plan for where we want to see the city going in the direction that it is going for our development over the next several years through 2030. It involves a lot of infill-type development, involves a fiscal-based approach to making sure the city has adequate services and what have you to provide back to the citizens, and just making sure we're all around a healthier city when it comes to development. So with that, I won't labor it much longer. If you'll, please welcome Marshall Hines up here, and he will take it from here.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. It is a real pleasure to be with you guys tonight. We got started in earnest on this plan in September of 2022, and so it's been an exciting path to where we are today. And what I would like to do, if it is all right with you all, is to take you through a quick presentation, sort of covering the broad topics covered in the comprehensive plan. And then what we'll do is cover a few of the questions that came up during the joint city council and planning commission workshop. And then I will discuss with you the recommendation that was made by the planning commission. So without further ado, I have a presentation here shortly, so bear with me while that's pulled up.
This happened to you at P&amp;Z, didn't it?
Well, I couldn't pull up my own things at P&amp;Z. This one I'm not going to take responsibility for, so. But it's a great pleasure to be here, you all.
Well, while we're waiting, I'll just say that I watched your presentation in its entirety to P&amp;Z, and I thought you did a tremendous job really summarizing a very dense document down to the key points.
Sure.
I also thought that Commissioners Stigall and Onkin and Delory did a great job with their feedback. So, y'all, y'all really have done a lot of work on this, and so that part of it is appreciated.
If we need a moment for the presentation, maybe what we could do is, is come back to this item in just a moment and go on to the next one as we're trying to find the document and get it pulled up properly.
Y'all wanna do that?
Rachel, do we?
Take a little pressure off?
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
We're gonna find it in the backup items.
I have it on my screen, but it's there online. So, we'll let you guys do that, Mayor. If you wanna go ahead and move to the next item, we can come back to it, sir.
No problem.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 19, Consider Approval of Resolution Selecting a Moderator for the 2024 Dialogue for Peace and Progress Celebrating Black History Month. That's gonna be Rachel. So, let's move on to, um, Will, can you handle the, the height variance item? You wanna do that one? All right, we're gonna, we'll move on to Agenda Item number 20, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider Approval of an Ordinance Requesting a Conditional Height Acceptance Pursuant to Section 53-1047 and Section 53-1048 of the City of Call Code of Ordinances. Projects located at 22497 I-35 in the city, and this item does have a public hearing. So, if there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing now. Seeing none, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Mr. Stigall.
Just like to say, upon consideration of this variance that's requested for height, that the technical piece is that it'll be on a downslope, so I don't think its relative height will make that much of a difference. But I wanna bring out a couple of positive things past that, and that is that this will be a large facility near our downtown in our TERS, and hopefully that could be a part of what we can offer this town is lodging near this downtown that we hope to rebuild. Also, something that's of interest here, too, is one of the reasons that they're asking for a variance in height is for the size of the rooms that they're looking to put in this facility. They wanna put meeting rooms, public meeting rooms, in the facility, which I think is something that would be quite useful in this town for private and public uses. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a reasoning discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's now closed. Mr. Atkinson. Ms. Sharp. Oh, there you are. I didn't even look at it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kayla Sharp, City Planner, for the record. And I still don't have a presentation up here.
It's a height variance to allow to go to four stories for a hotel on I-35?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for the presenter? Ms. Parsley?
Thank you, Mayor. So, since this country in suites will be inside the TERS in our downtown, what can we do about the elevation to have the historic feeling that we want to keep downtown?
So, this site is within the I-35 overlay, which has some architectural standards, so that will come back as a separate permit to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. It doesn't necessarily dictate style of architecture, but it does have some masonry components and things like that to it. So, they will have to get those elevations approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Cause I really would like to keep it historic if it's going to be within the TERS, especially for downtown.
State law kind of restricts what we're allowed to enforce in terms of architecture, and the I-35 overlay is just about the best that we have in terms of controlling architecture when it comes to materials and change in plane and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Zuniga.
Okay, hi Kaylee. I also had a few questions. I'm trying to kind of get the clear understanding of it. The, the variance that they went through was sort of unusual, that they're not actually a, a church or a public service type of organization, but they went under lodging as providing a good in order to get the variance. So, what type of safeguard do we have that another hotel doesn't maneuver the same way to get over the 48 feet height elevation? And then, secondly, are they only going to build to eight stories final? Or do they have, cause I believe in this zoning, they're allowed to go to 14 stories. So, would they be going to a higher elevation in the future once they, after they've built their eight stories?
Okay, so for your first question, the, the conditional use permit for the height variance, that's a case-by-case basis. So, if another development were to come in somewhere else in the city and want a similar variance, they would have to go through this process as well. So, that would be a request that the developer would make, and then it would come through this process. And of course, staff looks to make sure that it meets the requirements of our code to go through with that request. And then, for this particular hotel, they are looking to build four stories up to 58 feet. The request is specific to 58 feet. The base zoning district, which is retail services, allows a maximum height of 45 feet by right. And then, they're requesting the maximum of 58 feet, which will get them four stories, and the parapet screening walls and things like that that are associated with our standards and the I-35 overlay.
Is there any other building higher than 58 feet in our city?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, State Hospital.
The hospital is what I had in mind. This one is going to be sort of offset because of the downhill terrain. Is that kind of what I'm understanding? It's a, it's a down, it's a, the grade is lower?
Yes, it is just a little bit lower, and I don't have control over the slides.
So, it'll look more like, like really 45 or 47?
It will probably look closer to what's allowed per the base zoning district. I don't have control O for the slides yet, but they are up. And somewhere in here, I have kind of a Google Street View screenshot where you can kind of see the downward slope from the I-35 frontage road. So, there's definitely a little bit of a slope. It's actually the next one.
I mean, I, I think the request was reasonable why they're looking for it. I just wanted to make sure that we don't have the pattern of more hotels getting higher and higher because they found this way around it.
Understood. So, this, this particular code section that they're requesting actually does allow for them to go through this process and get a variance up to 150 feet, but we request that they specify what height that they're asking for. So, in this case, it was 58 feet, and that's fairly typical with something that we would see. Probably not getting very many 150-foot requests.
And, and retail zoning does allow a hotel built?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Kaylee.
Councilor Hazer.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item. So that we can have a discussion with the group around the variances pertains to design standards.
All right, there's a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
I'll go in second because according to what you're, you're requesting, Zuniga, is a specific type of height, but if later on we get approached by a larger hotel, we're gonna have a variance on them, correct? Is that what we would be wanting to do, is to limit the height on some of these hotels? If we got somebody that wants to come in and build, just throwing it out there, Hyatt or Hilton or something like that, or architectural designs, yeah. I mean, there's just a lot of questions.
Well, I don't think that withholding a reasonable height request in order to engage them about a TERS incentivized project is the, necessarily the right way to approach that. You know, the, the request is very reasonable. A four-story hotel on I-35 is a perfectly reasonable request. So, postponing it and then wanting to engage them with regards to a TERS, that the TERS, number one, can't really incentivize other than through, you know, tax rebates, which they're not requesting any at this point in time. We could, you know, once the TERS starts to generate income and revenue, there, there could be an opportunity to engage them there. But this would be the first project that actually generates revenues for the TERS to help increase those, you know, architectural standards. But it's just my thought. I don't see any, I don't personally see any reason to postpone a height variance request, especially on I-35 for a hotel. We haven't approved a hotel in seven years. It's an area where we are woefully under, you know, in terms of competition and the market saturation of other communities, we're, we're at the bottom in terms of hotel beds per capita. So, I don't wanna.
I don't think in my, Mayor, if you don't, I don't think it was a matter of this specific one, but I think if we go with this, which, you know, it, it does look good as far as what you're saying, are we going to put those kind of requirements in going forward if we're going to do this one and then say going forward, others are gonna have to be just like this model? I think it's just a matter of, again, some clarification. That's all we're saying. That's all it is, just clarifying where, where we're gonna be at, especially if we're looking at this here.
We can table it, yeah.
It's, it's not to throw it out or to, it's just to have them more discussions again because listening to what Councilman Zuniga was bringing up was the height and the limitations or non-limitations on this. And this is our first one, like you're saying. It's just having those conversations, sir.
So, are you suggesting that we bring it back at the next meeting? Are you talking about postponing this thing indefinitely, or?
No, I was, next meeting.
I would say just next meeting, and then we just get some more information about what we can request, you know, what is gonna be our variance going forward with specific hotels or specific motels and so forth. And then, if we're going to limit some and not limit, it's just making sure we're, we're clear on that.
Specifically, since we are talking about a downtown TERS, this is gonna be our?
Our first one?
Yeah.
Yes. That's, that's all it is, is just having those discussions, not, not just rejecting it all completely.
I, I just wanna have a standard so that we don't have six-story hotels, seven stories, eight, and this one's four, but they, they have the variance to get to four. Now, now another hotel could approach us on the 35, say we wanna be six stories. They got a four, we want six. We're bigger, we got more, more, more beds. So, what is our standard? What's gonna be our standard? Mayor, are we gonna go to 10 stories?
I think y'all are, I think y'all are thinking this.
Are we overthinking it?
Yeah, it's a four-story hotel.
I think it's very nice. I think it's very nice. Mayor? But what is the standard?
Mayor, pro ten.
Yeah, Mayor, everything's gonna come back on a case-by-case basis. So, you're gonna have an opportunity to say yes or no on the next hotel. It's not gonna be something that you're saying to yes now, and the next guy gets to do it, because if it's not a good project, we're not gonna approve it as a council. I mean, and we gotta be very careful of aesthetics. I mean, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna be illegal when it comes to the state. The state is really, has really set some boundaries on cities on what they can ask. And this is on the other side of I-35, even though it's in the TERS, it's on the east side of I-35 where we've been, as a council, looking at enhancing our east side and bringing more dollars to that area. So, I think this would be a really good project for us moving forward. You know, this is, this is pretty close to my district, so I'm, I'm really excited about something like this coming over to my district and bringing something of value and something that we've been lacking in our city for a long time, is more hotel rooms. I mean, we just, we just got a very big report from our Emergency Management Coordinator of the lack of rooms that we have in the area, and that would be something we could address here.
Councilor Parsley.
I, I'm not. I don't think that we are denying the project. All we wanted was to table it for one more meeting until we can all ask more questions regarding, you know, the approval of this project, maybe get more clarification into what is legal and is not, especially regarding to standard. Everybody has, it seems that everybody has a little bit more questions. So, if we were to table this at the next meeting, I don't see a problem with that. And with that, I call the question.
All right, the question has been called. Is there a second? I believe you have to have a second on calling the questions.
Sure, second.
All right, second, that's immediate cease of debate and roll call vote. A yes vote ceases debate and calls the motion.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yeah.
Tobias?
Yeah.
Harris?
Yes.
All right, the question's been called. We'll do a roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Mitchell?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
No.
Heiser?
Yeah.
Rizzo?
Nay.
Harris?
No.
Tobias?
Aye.
Parsley?
Aye.
Zuniga?
Nay.
All right, motion postpone fails, four to three. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilor Zuniga, that we approve Agenda Item Number 20. Is there a discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Heiser?
Sure.
Tobias?
In the theory for more discussion, nay.
Parsley?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Sorry. To, to approve, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes. All right, motion carries six to one. All right, now we'll go back to the comprehensive plan. Agenda Item Number 18, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider Approval of a, an ordinance for the Call 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Now, we're back up. We've already had the public hearing, so go ahead, Ms. Hines.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Again, it is a great pleasure to be here with you this evening. As I said a little bit earlier, this is a process that we undertook in earnest in September of 22, 2022. So, it's very exciting to be here to present the plan for adoption, just to recap so that everybody's on the same page. What I would like to do is give you a really quick overview of the plan itself. If you've already watched the P&amp;Z meeting, you'll have seen this, but I'll just take you and the public through it if that's all right with you. Then we'll talk a little bit about some of the discussion points at the council and P&amp;Z joint work session, and then I'll talk a little bit about the recommendation that was made by the Planning Commission. So, what I wanna do is talk to you first about the intent of the plan itself. It really has three big goals. The first is to educate and inform. It is true that the council and the Planning Commission and the staff will be the principal users of the document, but it was really important to both ourselves and the commission, council, and staff that the document is accessible by everyone. So, a great deal of thought was put into explaining the concepts that are gonna be discussed in more depth throughout the, the plan itself. The second major intent is to communicate Kyle's fiscal story. The plan discusses how productive your land use pattern is today and the kind of choices that need to be made to make your city more fiscally sustainable in the future. And lastly, the plan aims to provide a real framework for decision-making. When you think about land use decisions, budgeting, funding for projects here at the council level, the recommendations that you're gonna see in the major components and the implementation chapters are gonna give you the ability to sort of constantly check yourself against the goals that you and the community have articulated throughout this planning process. The plan is organized into four chapters. Those are, first, the introduction. That's gonna focus on the education aspect of the plan's intent. The second is the land use fiscal analysis, which takes a deep dive into the fiscal analysis that was done early in this planning project. The major component section of the document is where we get to the real heart of the recommendations that are being made throughout the plan. Those are in the categories of land use and neighborhoods. And then, we look at many of the concepts and strategies that are being recommended to the city to make it a stronger and more resilient place in the future. And the final chapter is the implementation chapter, and that really takes all of the recommendations that are in the plan, and it breaks them down into a series of actionable steps. That is really key. The relevant players inside city government are identified, as well as residents and community groups who will community groups who will also plug into this process, because it's very important that implementation is not something that only gets done here in this building, that it gets done out in the community at large. So, uh, just talking through a, a little bit of the big picture ideas throughout the plan, Chapter One is the one that focuses on the education intent. Uh, the development pattern of Kyle over time is represented here, and the plan explores how the massive expansion that you have had has really affected your fiscal bottom line. Uh, we also explain concepts like how building coverage and building height can affect how much revenue is generated for the city, but very, very importantly, uh, that discussion is also paired with the, how the character and intensity of a place is really a reflection of the community at large. That was something that we heard from people throughout this entire planning process, that there's a reason that they moved to Kyle and they want to replicate that character as much as they can in new development and redevelopment opportunities. We also, in Chapter One, set up and explained how engagement was really an integral part of this process. We really wanted to tie the plan directly back to the feedback that we got from the public, as well as you. Chapter Two is where we begin to dive into the parcel level analysis as part of the land use fiscal analysis, and that really takes a very holistic view of the entire financial situation as it pertains to land use. We look at a budget breakdown and what the city is, uh, spending today to maintain its infrastructure. What we found, of course, uh, is that if today's budget was continued as it is, there's not really enough money being allotted to maintain the infrastructure that you have on the ground without other funding mechanisms. And so the plan is, is trying to work us toward a future where your, uh, where the funds that you generate through your development pattern are enough to pay for the services that that development pattern needs. Chapter Two also identifies, uh, a series of revenue per acre goals that would ensure that the city is adequately funding streets and infrastructure maintenance in perpetuity. And importantly, very importantly, uh, the plan shows what a more fis- fiscally sustainable development pattern really looks like, and it looks pretty great. Um, in both an infill and greenfield development pattern, the kinds of places that are fiscally sustainable tend to provide more housing options, which provide more opportunity for people of different socioeconomic levels, ages, uh, et cetera. These better, uh, models of development can provide more open space through thoughtful conservation of your natural areas, and they really mix neighborhood scaled services directly into development in a way that can actually reduce the amount of traffic onto your arterial roadway system. Chapter Three, which is, um, the major components, uh, chapter, uh, we're talking about the land use and growth management component here, really looks at the logical places for growth in the city of Kyle, um, by assessing where there's vacant land that you already are running services to, infrastructure, water and wastewater, um, so that new development can be focused where your investments have already been made. But it does, of course, also accept that there are capacity challenges that the staff is working through, and so it identifies the areas which will continue to need attention to be able to support the population that we all expect to be coming here. The plan also, uh, introduces and explains a more modern tool for land use planning, and that is place types, as opposed to, uh, use-based future land use designations. Uh, these are, uh, d- designed to create more flexibility in uses across the city. They focus primarily on the character of each place. Um, and we, we aimed in the plan to really illustrate both with words and images how each place type should feel. And importantly, the plan itself ties those place types, uh, to the built environment by indicating which building typologies are appropriate in each, uh, place type. There are a series of growth sectors which have been introduced, and these are based significantly on the infrastructure build-out that you have, um, to help you focus, when possible, uh, where new development should be going, um, before we start thinking about extending lines out to the, the farthest reaches of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. As the third chapter moves into the neighborhoods component, uh, we look at the levels of intensity and the mixing of housing typologies is, is also discussed, um, as well as the beneficial implications of this, uh, which, as I mentioned a moment ago, one of which is, um, more affordable housing options. You guys may, um, remember some of the discussions that we had back, I think it was the big, the middle of last year, where we, um, asked you to take a look at a series of different development patterns and tell us where you felt the breakpoint was on the intensity of development that was appropriate for, for the city of Kyle. That was worked into the plan as well. Um, and then we spend time talking about what design elements make up different styles of neighborhoods, right? Because not all neighborhoods are supposed to be exactly the same. There are rural neighborhoods, there are more complete neighborhoods, um, with more walkability built into them, and there are transitional neighborhoods in between. And so we've identified, um, a number of the design elements that really, uh, accurately articulate, articulate these different development, uh, these neighborhood types. And so the benefit there is, as you have, uh, development coming to you, you can line up, um, what kind of a neighborhood this particular development is supposed to be and identify, does it meet up with the intent of this, and does it have the design elements that would be appropriate for that neighborhood type? And then that brings us to Chapter Four, uh, which really rounds out the plan, um, with an implementation strategy, which, as I said, is designed to make meaningful change through many small actions, as opposed to a single monumental, um, and often very expensive project or two. Um, the key decision-making principles which are identified in this chapter, um, that were articulated, articulated by yourselves and the public are represented here, along with a series of questions that you can ask as you're making decisions, so that you're really keying into the principles that the community felt, found value with. And then, um, just to speak a little bit more specifically to the implementation strategy itself, that, you know, the recommendations, they're all sorted by those major components that I was speaking about in Chapter Three, and there's a series of general recommendations made as well. What's really key as you begin this process of implementing the plan, um, is, is understanding how important it is to build up to big change through those small actions. And so we have, we have clearly, uh, listed small actions that are obtainable often in the very short term that are going to build to these larger recommendations that the plan makes. Um, how each action item is tied to the values and aspirations that your community articulated are in here as well, as, as well as the people that plug into the, uh, each individual action. So, um, let me talk a little bit about the work session that was done last year and some of the questions that we heard there, and, uh, I just want to try and respond to a, a number of them. There was a question regarding, um, the design, something like the designation of green space in the plan or a one-to-one ratio of allowing more density in development for green space as sort of a trade-off. You know, both of these, we think, are really good things that you ought to be thinking seriously about doing. They are not generally part of a comprehensive plan. They would be code amendments or ordinance amendments that you adopt that, uh, make these sort of things reality. But what is critical here is that the plan speaks to all of this. It speaks to the benefits of green space being accessible to everyone within walking distance. It speaks to the value of developing places which inherently use the land, the finite resource that you have land, in a more meaningful way to allow for more open space, um, as something that's paired with, with, with density. There was, there was a question about the Level Three fiscal analysis that was done and the delta, the change between now, uh, today and what the city looked like at the time that that was undertaken. That will always be the case. The fiscal situation in Kyle will be a little bit different tomorrow than it is today. Um, that plan is designed, that, uh, analysis is designed to be a snapshot in time where Kyle was when we began this process. And one of the, uh, recommendations in the implementation chapter is to undertake that process on a regular basis. Three to five years is something that we often recommend, um, and that gives you an opportunity to really show, if we have undertaken, uh, meaningfully, recommendations in this plan, what have those net us at the end? So you use it as a comparison point. So it is very intentionally a snapshot in time. There were a couple of questions about traffic created with the infill development. Um, on pages, I think it's fifty-six and fifty-seven, uh, in the document, we took a great deal of care to illustrate how easy it is to park infill development. Uh, when you're thinking about the traffic generated from infill development, what's important to remember is that tr- traffic is simply a product of a system in which people are required to drive everywhere. If you are able to put the things that people want access to closer to home, that's less time that their car has to be on the road. If you're able to put those things extremely close to where they live, people will often elect not to always hop in the car to grab a gallon of milk or, um, you know, buy a bouquet of flowers. The idea is that the development pattern writ large needs to change so that, uh, traffic can be affected. Um, there were also a couple of notes in Chapter Three. There were some questions about the downtown boundaries, just very clearly, this plan is not designed to override the boundaries that are being created as part of the downtown plan. Those will, tho- as those are established, and if they're adopted by ordinance, the plan doesn't do anything to subvert that. There were, there was a question about schools and how they develop. Um, I think that the, the question was effectively, well, you know, the school district is building a lot of schools out on the edge. That is true, and the school district will continue to do that as long as the development pattern that you are adopting is pushing new, uh, members of the community outward. The school district has great demographers that they employ to come up with all of their plans. If you're developing in a more compact way, if you're developing in a way that's more fiscally sustainable and that creates better pockets of neighborhoods, the city, the school districts have absolutely no issue, uh, building schools where they're necessary. Where they show them as necessary today is based on a series of assumptions about the way they expect you to develop in the future. And if you continue to develop in a way that is largely suburban, you will continue to get suburban, uh, school sites. And then, uh, there was a concern that we heard voiced, um, that the future land use plan here doesn't accommodate for people who want single-family houses. Uh, we want to take every effort to dispel that as clearly as possible. If you take the traditional neighborhood place type in this plan and the rural place type in the plan, both of those accommodate for single-family housing. Those make up something like ninety percent of your, um, total land area on the future land use plan. So no one throughout this process, no one in the community, uh, certainly ourselves, the staff, the commission and the council, never indicated to us that they wanted to disallow or make impossible single-family housing. What we did here is that we, as a community, want the opportunity for more diverse housing types to be available to us, and that is really what the plan is aiming to do, not to disallow any other particular type of housing. So, um, those are the items from that joint work session. Uh, if we've got just another minute, I would like to take you through the recommendation that the planning commission made. Uh, I will say upfront, uh, there were absolutely no issues with any of the recommendations that were made by, um, the planning commission. Most of them are quite small. Uh, they asked that we update the, the acknowledgements page with, uh, the new names of city council members, planning and zoning commissioners and staff. Not an issue at all. There was an issue with, um, a legend on page sixty-six, that one was on me. Um, also not a problem to update. There was some, we just wanted to verify that the major entitlements map, uh, which is part of the, which is an element of the future land use map, was up to date, and we are working with staff to get new shape files to ensure that that is accurate, uh, to the moment. There were, um, the place types changed names in the middle of the plan. We decided to kind of, uh, rework the names so that they were a little bit clearer about what they were really asking for. And so there were three spots in the document where the old names had been left in, and we hadn't caught that. Not a problem to resolve that. And then there are two small, um, there was, there were two small bits of language toward the back of the document in the implementation chapter, um, that were brought to our attention looking for some clarity. We've worked with staff, um, to come up with a, a fix for that on, uh, page one eighteen, and we did some back and forth and some research and believe that the item on page one thirty is appropriate as is. So that, I know you guys have had a long meeting, I'm sorry that was such a long presentation, but that's everything I've got, and I am here and available for you to ask any questions or get any clarification. Uh, but I just really want to end by saying that this has been, uh, a really great experience for our team. We have had fantastic, fantastic, um, interactions with your community, as well as yourselves and the planning commission and the staff. It has been fantastic from beginning to end, so, um, we are really excited to be here and hope that you move forward with adopting the plan.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the presenter? Ms. Harris?
I have a couple, short ones. Um, the four categories on page twenty-four do not include retired people who make up approximately twenty percent of our population. I think that that's a population that needs special consideration in addition to the young families and the up-and-comings, um, that we talk about. Uh, people who are retired and wanting to remain in their homes are people who are retired and are looking for other types of, uh, residents, uh, to enable them to live more independently in the community. Uh, that, that could be an almost separate category in our studies. So as we go forward with our plan, I don't know if it needs a modification of what you said, but, um, I would like for us to keep in mind that that's also a very important group in our community. Twenty percent is not insignificant.
Councilmember Harris, I'm so sorry. Would you, would you mind just directing me to what page you're on when you mentioned it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you.
There's four categories there.
Uh, thank you.
Um, and then, um, on page twenty-nine, and really through the whole document, and I really appreciate this coming from Parks and Rec, uh, really high value is placed on Parks and Recreation, but Park was not a part of this plan in any way. We were not at the table, we were not invited, uh, we sat in, I sat in a lot, because I wanted to see what it was. I understand that Parks and Rec will have a separate comprehensive plan, um, or Parks Plan, and I just, as we are going through that, I would like for it to be as thorough as this. Parks is also in an ec- an economic driver in our city and can be even more so, and with the new sports parks will be more so. Um, and I think that it deserves more attention, um, and especially when we're talking of quality of life and the neighborhoods, uh, the strong neighborhoods that we talked about in the plan, that the parks and green space are absolutely crucial, and those are not planned in at this point. So we need to be sure that we're doing at least an overlay, uh, and looking at what's, uh, needed in the various neighborhoods.
Do we have any, uh, sense of where, where we stand with regards to ordinances that clarify our position regarding g- green space? Uh, you know, as it's been discussed, the comp plan doesn't speak into that, but to Councilmember Harris's point, that's something that we definitely want to make sure is in there as we're focusing on infill and fiscal, you know, sustainability, we need to make sure that we're real clear on the green space requirements.
I, I'll try to speak to some of that. I, I don't think there's an ordinance that I know of, but by policy, I believe the goal is to have a park within a ten-minute walking distance of, of every, um, citizen or every resident, um, if I remember that correctly. So you can look at drawing the, the circles around that radius for all the, the homes to see are there any gaps or where parks need to be, and that's one of the ways that we could address it. I think that's by policy is my recollection of that. It is by ordinance, so Will's correcting me, that is through an ordinance, so.
I think it'd probably be good for us to get a refresher. Uh, we haven't really had that opportunity in a while, just so that we can understand what we're requiring, uh, to make sure that the current ordinance really complies with the vision and spirit of this document.
We could certainly do that for you.
And not just the current ordinance, but, you know, if you look at past, you know, we're talking about infill. So if you're looking at what we need as a whole community and infill, Parks needs to be integrated into that.
I agree. All right, any other comments, discussion points? Councilor Zuniga?
Yeah, I'd also like to see, uh, maybe some clarification on kind of walk, walkability and connectivity, uh, east and west in the comprehensive plan, so, so that we, we still, um, are mindful of pedestrians and how they're getting, how they're getting from one side to another through the comprehensive plan without, through the, through neighborhoods, and specifically though over I, over thirty-five.
I, I would, um, if you'll permit me, I have a, just a quick response to that. We agree with you. That was something that came up a great deal during the engagement that we had with the public regarding this. Uh, you'll notice a number of, um, recommendations and actions in the implementation chapter that speak specifically to better east and west connectivity, that speak to, uh, better, um, access to services and needs on both sides of I thirty-five, and specifically as it pertains to neighborhoods, um, one of the most, um, equity-creating things that you can do regardless of the physical location of a neighborhood is to allow those neighborhoods to grow and, um, change and adapt over time to the needs of that community, which is something, uh, that is, um, suffused throughout the entire plan, um, so that those, uh, needs that might not be being met in a particular part of town today can be met closer to home, so that not every bit of shopping, for example, requires you to move to the other side of thirty-five. So certainly, um, that was something that we tried to, um, very seriously weave throughout the entirety of the plan.
Thank you for that.
Of course.
Councilor Heiser? On, uh, on page eighty-five, you have, you, you have a graphic that shows walk, walkability scores.
There's three scores, one being downtown on a range from zero to 100.
Yes.
You know, the only score that was even on the medium side was our downtown that said that's somewhat walkable. Then there was one that looked like it was pointing at, at Button Creek that showed a zero score. How did y'all arrive at that data? Did y'all analyze all the subdivisions? Is there more data that we could look at?
Well, every neighborhood in the entirety of the city and much of the country can be, that, that data was pulled directly from WalkScore, which is an organization that basically takes into account the services and needs of, of a regular person and, and can map how far any given piece of property is from those daily needs. And so, you know, we consider it a fairly objective measure of walkability. The concept basically being that, as Mr. Langley pointed out, a park, for example, is really only beneficial in a walking capacity if it's within a quarter mile or so of your house. We generally refer to that as a pedestrian walk shed. If your neighborhood has a park within your walking distance, that means that you have a walkable park. But if you don't have a walkable place that you can get your dry cleaning done or take, take your kids over and get a cup of coffee and, and an ice cream, the WalkScore will be lower because it's trying to find a collection of needs being met within that pedestrian walk shed. So I would encourage everybody to check that out. WalkScore.com is a fantastic resource.
Okay, thank you. That's what, any other questions, comments?
Well, I thought that some of the commissioners brought up some good points when they said at the, at their meeting that this is really just a sort of a foundational document. It's only as valuable to the community as we place value in it by using it to build out our ordinances and also considering what it has to say as we look at development agreements and zoning cases. So, you know, my hope is that the, this council will, you know, take some of what this document has to say to heart and build upon it so that we can be more predictable, but also making sure that what, what we're doing on a week-in, week-out basis is moving us closer to the vision of this document. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the comp plan. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. This item does have to come back unless we finally pass it. Is, it can only happen if it's unanimous vote, which it is. Is there any objection to this item being finally passed?
Just as long as it passes with the recommended changes.
Do you need me to change the motion?
Yeah, because he talked about the changes.
Yeah, you're right. That's a good, very good point.
I, I would say those recommendations and, and changes were incorporated into the recommendation that was before you, so we should begin.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, seeing no objections, this item is finally passed. All right, next up, agenda item number 19, consider approval of a resolution selecting a moderator for the 2024 Dialogue for Peace and Progress, celebrating Black History Month item. Ms. Sonier.
Hello, council leadership. Rachel Sonier, Communications Director, for the record. So in August of 2023, sorry, this, city staff brought a resolution to council at council's request, creating criteria for the selection of moderators and panelists for the Dialogue for Peace and Progress events. And y'all passed a resolution creating both of those. So now we are bringing forth to you the moderator for selection for the February 15th Black History Month Dialogue. So the criteria, just as a refresher, because it's been a minute, the criteria that council passed in August 2023 said that moderators will be elected city officials or appointed city board, commission, or committee members, that they must not be running for office within the city of Kyle or Hayes County or anywhere that, or in any office that represents Hayes County or City Kyle, and that they would be selected by council prior to each Dialogue for Peace and Progress event. Whoever council selects would be responsible for choosing the panelists from our pool of applicants, outlining the discussion topics and questions for our panelists, and of course, moderating the panel. So our next dialogue will be Thursday, February 15th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. here in this very room. We'll be also live streaming it on Facebook and our Kyle 10 channel. And on, earlier in December, I reached out to all boards and all commission members in the city of Kyle. I received back only one interested board member that would like to be a moderator. So tonight, I bring before you the qualified potential moderators as anyone that is on council, as well as Vanessa Westbrook, Arts and Cultural Board Member.
All right, does anybody on the dais wish to join Ms. Westbrook in the moderation? I'd like to make a motion to approve Vanessa Westbrook as a moderator.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve Ms. Westbrook as a moderator. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 21, consider approval of a resolution acknowledging the Kyle Parkway-Lehman Road Extension Project as serving a public purpose for public use and establishing the design elements for the roadway. Mr. Cantalupo.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Joe Cantalupo. I work for K. Fries and Associates, and we are your program manager for the bond. Both, this item that I'll go through, a lot of it is a sort of template language we use, but I will note that this item and the next item were brought to the regular agenda because in conversation with city staff and the city manager, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted a couple of things because you're approving the projects to move forward, and they're just a key element or two about each project that we wanted to make sure that, you know, you're aware of, and that's why they were put on the regular agenda. So this first slide is just the regular language. When we started down this process, council had asked that before we moved forward in earnest, that, that we come back. And what we collectively chose was that we would come back after public workshops that would be held when the schematic design or final design got to a certain point. And for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road project, just as a reminder, this was the budget breakdown that was originally proposed as part of the bond issue, and the total estimated cost of the project at that point was just about $42.5 million. And here's a little bit of background. So the, the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road project is, is really two pieces. It extends Lehman Road from Button Creek Road up to Dacey Lane, and it extends Kyle Parkway from Dacey Lane back to that new section of, of Lehman Road. This is a four-lane section with a median, and that is the typical cross-section. You can see the 14-foot outside lanes, 12-foot interior lanes, the, the median, and then sidewalks on, on either side. The median, this project includes several roundabouts, and this median, or the median section is closer to the roundabout areas because you need that splitter island to help, you know, with the operation of the roundabouts. And then there is, you know, just sort of a schematic of the cross-section of the roundabout. It's a two-lane roundabout, 14 lanes, and then there's a, a truck apron. And, and I will mention that again in a couple of seconds, the significance of, of that. And there is the four-lane section without the median. It's, it's so simple that I struggle on how to explain it in comparison to what I said a few seconds ago. And then here are the key considerations, and this is where I'm going to spend a little bit more than a few seconds. So the first point is that there are four roundabouts along the, the project site, and this is in keeping with the city's roundabouts first policy. There's one, well, there's one each at the two points in Dacey Lane. There's a roundabout proposed where Kyle Parkway intersects Lehman Road, and then there is a roundabout on Lehman at the Button Road connection. And that, we'll talk about that in a second as well. The other thing you'll see in the diagram is the Arwa Water Line, right? This project is significant in the sense that we are trying to coordinate, right, the design and construction. I shouldn't say trying. We are coordinating the design and construction of this project with the Alliance Regional Water System, so they're in the same right-of-way or at least directly adjacent to each other. So the timing of this project and its approval is significant in the sense that we do not want to delay the Arwa Water Line, right, because of the road project. And those are the two key considerations that we wanted, you know, to bring to your The other consideration, and I mentioned this earlier, was the, the roundabout at Lehman and Button Road near the high school. This was, as you might remember, a, a little bit of a, of a discussion point. And when we talked about this the first time, when council approved, you know, that roundabout sticking, we had said that the design engineers did an analysis and they recommended the roundabout. And back in August, you approved the roundabout staying in the project. And that is, you know, with the roundabout looks like its, its current configuration. You can see the splitter islands. You can see how it relates to the high school and the surrounding properties. The other thing, and it's a little bit maybe harder to make out, but you can see the sidewalks and the pedestrian crossings. And, and I'll add now and maybe again in a second that we had an initial conversation with the school district where we talked to superintendent, the head of the Capitol Programming, and one of their safety directors. And by the time we got done with the meeting, they were convinced that not only the roundabout, but that the pedestrian facilities that would be done as part of the projects and surrounding the roundabout would, would help. There's another point I'm going to make about that in a second. We held an initial public workshop in the beginning of December, and because of scheduling, there were three projects on the east side of 35 where the workshop was actually held here. And it was just because of scheduling. And what we learned is that, that, you know, that a lot of folks really had wished that we had the workshop on the east side of 35 closer to the project areas. So we held that on January 10th. And we got a, a little bit in the beginning mixed feedback about the roundabout in Lehman and Button Creek at the second, at both workshops, but on the one just on January 10th, several people that operate the transportation system, actual bus drivers and, and their boss, you know, the coordinator for transportation for the, for the, for the, for the school, came. And they were not concerned about the roundabout as much as they were concerned that the roundabout could handle things like buses making turns in the roundabout. And that's where that apron comes into significance. These roundabouts, and I wish I could remember the, the, the code name they use for the truck, but they're designed, right, with that apron to be able to take tractor trailers turning through them, and they can certainly take the bus. When we talked, when we explained that to the folks from the school district that were there, their questions were answered. Again, they were not against the roundabout. They wanted to make sure, though, that the roundabouts would be designed so that the buses could safely get through it. Sort of the, you know, the cherry on the sundae for them was learning that we were also, you know, at the request of the city, making sure that there were other pedestrian facilities that not only supported the road, but supported the circulation between the school and the surrounding communities, you know, related to pedestrians. So again, and I know I mentioned this earlier in the evening, the pedestrian facilities not only serve the community in general, but they're really also going to help enhance the kids that choose to walk to school from the surrounding neighborhoods, and it'll help them navigate the roundabout. So there was also some interest expressed for traffic calming in some of the, the surrounding neighborhoods. So it was a good thing that we were urged to have that second public workshop, not only because we were able to explain the roundabout in greater detail, but it also gave more people the opportunity to come and, and learn about not only this project, but the other projects that were there as well. So we're expecting to have the 60% PSNE done in, in the middle of August. And maybe we should put this second bullet first. Assuming or hoping that council approves us to move forward, we are going to come back as soon as it gets done with a task order for the PSNE, which is the plan specifications and estimates. That's the final design. We'll come back with that task order for council approval, and then that PSNE will be started in a hurry. And the reason we haven't brought that to approval is because we needed your approval of the project moving forward, and that's what we're seeking tonight. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cantalupo. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Tobias.
All right, thank you. Yes, I want to first thank Ryan and Rachel and Amber and Jesse and Jerry and everybody that was there for the second workshop. I know we originally had it in December here at City Hall. Some of the residents in that area were really hoping that they'd get something at Gemstone, which you guys were able to work together and get at the public works. So I'm glad we were able to have that and get the feedback that you wanted because as soon as Joe walked in, he already had his backpack on. He had all the school bus drivers lined up. I said, this is the guy you need to talk to. And then he, before, before he put his bag down, all the ladies were ready to have a conversation with you. So I was very glad and thankful that they showed up.
I'm forever grateful.
And, and I appreciate that. I know this has been a long controversial discussion when it comes to the roundabout and, and at the school. And it's just, again, council, I just needed to reemphasize that a lot of the concerns they had was because of the pedestrians in the area and the students that have to walk there. Okay? And as I said before, there have been times on my position, you know, I know we use that, I've been using that term a lot. I am for roundabouts in specific areas as long as it matches the area that it needs to be. And so that, that's kind of why I wanted to give that feedback, to, to thank everybody for, for doing that, and, and I'm glad we were able to have more residents out there to understand why the vote was taken the way it was and why that the importance of what your guys are trying to do about the roundabouts in the direction that the city's trying to go with on that end, Mayor. Just wanted to let you know that the residents were, again, coming in. Some of them didn't have the pitchforks like they did the last time, but a lot of them were there saying, okay, it's been done. It's been finalized. How is this going to work?
Well, I, I will echo. I think it's hugely important that if we're going to do it, regardless of whether or not you're on the side of roundabout or, or signalized intersection, if, if whatever decision's made, let's make sure that the intersection is the absolute best it can be for the unique circumstances. And the, the prolonged discussion, I think, has really helped for that to materialize. And hopefully, you know, at the end of the day, it'll actually be something that, once it's, you know, the adoption rate of roundabouts normally doubles within a year after the roundabout is open. Like it becomes more, you know, adopt, you know, appreciated and utilized after the fact. But, you know, you don't get to design it but once, so making sure that it's done the right way matters. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll tell you where they took the pitchforks. Took them to the residence coffee I had right after the vote of the roundabout.
I remember that one.
That one was really heated. But I appreciate, Joe, that you had, you know, the willingness to go and do another open house because I do know, I mean, we, I heard complaints for a month regarding that change of vote. So having more information and allow residents to ask all the questions, it was really important so they could understand how the process goes and, you know, why the change of vote and why do we go over with this and, you know, the, the lifespan of a roundabout compared to a light. So thank you so much for offering that to the residents.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Thank you, Joe. It was very important and really relieving to hear that these concerns, which were rightful, rightful concerns for the teenage drivers and the neighborhood, were addressed with the school district and that the buses will be okay there. I did ask you one question when we, when we, when we paused this, and I used to be a streetlight guy, but I think I've seen enough data to, to see that this does fit there. I do love the improvements to the sidewalks. I think that, that's something we needed in there. But I asked you one question, and I said, are there other two-lane roundabouts near schools? I think you found one of an elementary school. But did you find any more? But did you find any more data or information about that particular infrastructure design near a school?
I want to say that I can't remember. We have lots of things that we've collected and looked at, but I'll mitigate my I-don't-know right now with letting you know that we are working on, so at the workshop on the 10th, right, we had a board that just talked about roundabouts, a simple board. And what we're working on now, which will, you know, we have to clear up through the chain, with, starting with staff, is we're working on something to put on the website that, a graphic, if not a video, that shows the benefits of roundabouts, and then links to the different things that we're finding that explain how they operate and how they work and where they've been used. We haven't, we're still putting that information together, and we're hoping that it'll get done sometime early in February.
Good. I also appreciate that we went beyond what is just by right, the city can build its infrastructure, but that we included the feedback from the school board members. I think that that showed that we were willing to take our time and get this done right.
Yes.
Right? Because what I really wanted was for this to be done right and not regret that tough vote, and hopefully make the entire community proud of the roundabout design there. Because we did not want to underbuild it. Because then, then that would have just caused the problems. So we wanted it highest standard there.
I just want to echo that, actually. I think the collaboration with the school district is vital. So, you know, we have this fear that, like, we're going to go down the process, because we see it through our eyes, and all of a sudden the school district will say, oh, we never saw this, or we don't agree, you know, and it takes collaborative effort right there at that intersection in particular. So the fact that you've gotten them on board and worked through those concerns speaks volumes about the confidence, at least for myself, that I have in your ability to actually execute that. To be clear, we're not voting on the roundabout right now. We already voted on that. We're voting on the project schematics for the Lehman extension and...
This is the, you have a project?
Yeah.
Now, pick up, pick up the pace, guys. That's my interpretation of your vote.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Call Parkway Lehman Road extension schematic. Our motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Heizer. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Tobias.
One, one last thing, if you don't mind.
I got you, Mr. [inaudible].
When it comes to the K-Freeze and these open houses and updates where we've had, I've been to four of them already, and I want to thank you, Joe, and I want to thank Ms., I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Harper.
Harper. Your group has been very professional, very friendly, and whenever the residents come in, of course, they come in with, you know, don't, they're very timid, as you can tell, because they don't know what they're walking into. But your group makes them feel so comfortable that they can be able to engage, and I wanted to let the city know that. We hired a great group, that when they come into these open houses, again, especially when you have a lot of elderly, and I'm, thank you, Ms. Harris, for coming this last time as well, she was there greeting some of the residents there. I do appreciate your professionalism and also the courtesy to engage with the residents there, make them feel more at home and made ease, and then next thing you know, the questions are flowing, and they leave more informed, and that was the whole key of it all. So thank you all that.
All right, any further, oh, Mayor Proton.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick. Joe, thank you. Really excited about the road curves up on the middle of the island, but I'm also concerned about the little islands that allow traffic to flow in there. I'd like to see a road curb there instead of just a straight piece of concrete coming straight up. It's something that's kind of concerning me with the road, with the roundabouts in the area, because I'm worried about the fire trucks, even though you've got the road curb in the middle, not having that road curb on those little islands that allow traffic to flow in and flow out kind of concerns me.
And I believe you also heard about the semi-trucks as well. So combination of everything, thank you.
We'll, we'll just make sure that the curbing on the center island, I'm sorry, on the splitter islands entering and exiting the roundabouts can accommodate, you know, the highest level of truck that they expect to have go through them.
I appreciate it, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Now we get to vote on a tree. Agenda item number 22, consider approval of a resolution acknowledging the Old Stagecoach Road and Center Street off streets system project as serving a public purpose for public use and establishing the design elements for the roadway. Mr. Cantaluppo.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, this is, you know, we're bringing this back for council's consideration with the hope that it gets approved, and that, again, is the, in my words, you have a project, now please go get it done. So this is the Old Stagecoach Road Center Street project, and this is the off-system portion, meaning the non-textout portion. And this is the budget that was allocated through the bond process, and it's just over $41 million. And it's, big picture, it improves Old Stagecoach Road from RM150 to Center Street, and it improves Center Street from Old Stagecoach Road to Veterans Drive. And you can see, you know, the project limits on the screen, just as a point of reference, the label Center Street, the lower part of the corridor, that is where the on-system portion begins. So we're going from south to north. The first section goes from Old Stagecoach Road to, what happened to it? I'm sorry, let me flip through this. One section is Old Stagecoach Road, it's at Veteran Drive, Veterans Drive. It is a two-lane with a turn lane median, and it's got the vibe trail on one side and the sidewalk, and the buffer within the right of way after both pedestrian facilities varies. The other section between Center Street and Six Creeks Boulevard is also a three-lane section, again, but this has got the turn lane in the middle, two travel lanes, and again, a sidewalk, a six-foot sidewalk on one side and the vibe trail on the other. And then the third section is from Six Creeks Boulevard to Jacksey Hayes Trail, and this is the, one of the, it's on the north end, it's the shorter of the segments, and it's got sidewalks on both sides, it has bike lanes, and it has two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction and a 12-foot median. And this is the one that, again, goes from Jacksey Hayes Trail, and it connects right into Six Creeks Boulevard. These are the key considerations. There's the two roundabouts located along the project. One is at Center Street and Old Stagecoach Road, and the other is at Six Creeks Boulevard. Again, just calling those out because of the city's roundabouts-first policy and to let you know that we're able to accommodate those. The second key consideration is the tree along Old Stagecoach Road, and just acknowledging that the tree has to be removed. Okay, I'm going to keep going. Along, you know, to support the idea that the tree needs to be removed, is that back in February 2020, city staff had an arborist take a look, and that arborist provided the city with a report. And there were a couple of key considerations from that report. One was that the tree would be expected to decline after the construction of the project, regardless of any management to the tree. The other key consideration was that it had a low rating in terms of root structure and health, and there was a statement that said the overall condition of the tree was poor. And then the final note that we're highlighting is that this 51-inch tree is a poor candidate for preservation. The other thing I'll note about this is that it's come up a few times, you know, well, why not just move the road? And that, that is, I shouldn't say that it couldn't be done, because there's always a way, but in this case, it would be very, very expensive, and our collective opinion, and very damaging to the surrounding community. One side is a, an extensive drainage structure that helps manage water, you know, from the road and/or developments. And on the other side of the tree, you would be not just in yards, you would be in homes. So there's no way to circumvent the tree. The tree is in declining health, and it is not a good candidate, you know, for management after the road gets constructed, even if you could avoid it, and that's why the tree needs to be removed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cantaluppo. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Harris.
Comment about the tree? It's kind of a legacy oak. It's a beaut, it's a declining tree, it obviously is. We couldn't possibly move it because it doesn't have a root structure that supports that. But one of the things, as we take down a legacy oak like that, we can do is to preserve the wood and use that for other purposes. Some of the things I've seen done with legacy trees like that that have to come out is to use them as sculpture in another location. For instance, we could put, we could use the trunk as sculptures in the two roundabouts there on Stagecoach. So I'd like to see us think about integrating something like that, and that's not necessarily in your plan, but I would like for it to be in ours.
Yeah, that was actually a discussion that we had from back in the day, you know, the reason that we didn't move forward, that was the direction that we were going to go, it's just because the project languished until we got it approved in the bond. But I think your proposal's good. My concern would be that if we just try to allow that to happen, once you get ready to construct the road and the tree gets knocked down, I guess what I'm saying is, we should be proactive to start that process now.
Yes.
And go ahead and deal with the tree before the construction starts, you know, concurrently. So we have our own people taking the tree down, and maybe the Arts and Culture Board can take a look and make some recommendations and...
That would be our recommendation as well, is that to keep it out of the construction of the road this way it gets handled. I mean, we can put a lot of stuff in, like, the construction agreements, but there's going to be nothing better, in my opinion, than the city handling the way it wants to be handled, because you'll have to also deal with where you're going to store the wood and things like that, and that needs to be figured out ahead of time.
So one of the things, Mayor, if I could, one of the things I'd suggest is that, one of the things Joe and I have been talking about is all the various roundabouts that we're putting in across the city, including the ones that we're going to be installing at Kohler's. We believe there's a real branding opportunity to design those in such a way that they're connected across the city and that they communicate our brand as a city to the entire community. And so as we look at engaging a partner to help us look at how we can do that, we could bring this up to them and look at some creative ways, bring you back some concepts to see how could this be put in one of these roundabouts, what would that look like? And then we could really, you know, have a plan for it before the road construction starts to tell you how we could do it. But it's certainly something that we could do and incorporate in some of the roundabouts, there's plenty of room. I don't know what that design would look like, but we can help get some people to help us do that and bring you back some ideas.
I think the design would be each roundabout have an oak tree planted in the middle. You know?
We can look at all kinds of things.
Yeah, just an idea.
I think, you know, some of the signage that we have around town, entryway markers, I mean, that's one way to kind of brand it. There's lots of different ways we can brand it, connect it. You may have some signature pieces, maybe some art that you might have in certain roundabouts that would help you brand the whole city.
And I know a lot of people new to this community, and I've talked to a bunch of people, and even some people that graduated from high school, year, decade ago, they're like, they don't really care about the tree, you know, it should have been gone years ago. But there are still people that have sentimental value on this, and so if this does go the route that it needs to go, do we do it in a very respectful manner? And we do it right versus the middle-of-the-night kind of scenario, you know what I'm saying?
A celebration.
Councilmember Harris, yes.
Yeah, there's some really good examples of how to repurpose trees that it no longer can be trees. And the flood in Wimberly is an excellent example of that, where the, that flood took down a whole lot of the cypress trees, and a lot of the cypress trees that were left weren't going to survive either. And there is a, a artist in the community that carves those in Wimberly. So if you go around the Wimberly community, you will now see memorials, basically, to that flood. Same in Galveston, the hurricane came through, and now there are just beautiful wood sculptures. So there's, there's a good bit of data to help us maybe think about what to do with the tree.
Brian, are you okay with us including some direction in this motion for y'all to come up with a plan for how to handle that tree?
Sir, absolutely, thank you.
I'd like to, Mayor Proton.
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to say, yeah, I love all those ideas, Lord Lee, it's a great idea, it's something we looked at early on when we were first talking about this tree, but I want to give everybody a sense of history. So what happened with this tree is that when we first got the road from the county, when we incorporated the road into the city, the county went back and redid the road, cutting some of the roots of the tree. So the tree has been compromised quite a few times. This was something that the residents, early on, when the tree was young, was asked of the county commissioners to remove when it was a county road, because they got tired, a lot of the residents in Kyle were getting tired of stopping around that tree, they were afraid of an accident. And so it's just a little bit of history, but honestly, now, knowing that the tree's compromised the city, that puts us in liability. This tree were to one day hurt someone, we would open ourselves to all kinds of liability as a city. So I saw that happening in the tree that was falling down near Barton Creek, they really talked about the liability, and that's why they, it was really hard for them to take that tree down, but they knew the right thing was to do it, because you don't want to see anybody get hurt. And, you know, public safety's got to be party number one for us as a council.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 22 and to direct staff to bring back a proposal that includes the removal of the tree ahead of construction by, not by the constructing firm, and to allow for us to reimagine and reincorporate that tree into art through a process that includes the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Just real quick with Joe. Joe, just want to say thank you for sitting down with me and giving me explanation on Stagecoach Road. It was very important to me to see that it was going to be a three-lane road, not a four-lane road down from Center Street up, it's not till you get to Six Creeks. Thank you for giving the explanation of the adjacent road next to it, how the residents won't have to go through an easement to get to the road in front of their house. Just want to thank you and your staff for taking time to come out and present, making the presentation for me. I just want to say thanks.
You're very welcome, and we appreciate your patience.
Hang on, Joe, hang on, Joe. There's a, there's a motion on the tables, there's the motions by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Heizer. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Cantaluppo, go ahead. Sorry, I had to finish that. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say, we appreciated councilmembers' patience. We had a, it was a long day for us, and we were having trouble getting oriented to our own plan, and so we gave them a little bit of heartburn, but then we straightened it out. So thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion, motion carries six to one. All right, six to one. All right, next up, Agenda Item 23, consider directing the city manager to review street parking violations at Water Leaf Park during high-yield sports events. Mr. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing this agenda item up at the request of a resident, and it's actually over a concern, which is a good concern. So I want to start off by saying that I would in no way would want to discourage families and kids from enjoying our parks. I think that's what we want. We want more outdoor activities. With the weather changing into better climate, I think that there's going to be more use of the Water Leaf Park for families. So we've got the baseball fields, the trails, and we have soccer fields. Magnificent. But the issue, the concern that is coming is from residents about not enough parking out there. And so I just want to read what was sent to me. Miguel Zuniga, is there anything that can be done to regulate the noise, traffic, and downright in consideration of the soccer players at Water Leaf Park? Today, I had to block the street while trying to find the owner of a truck who was blocking half of my driveway, along with the bumper... who was blocking half of my driveway, along with the bumper-to-bumper parking on the other side of the street. Um, this made it difficult to get out and impossible to get back in until they moved their car. If truck owner's friend had not been at the truck, I would've had to call the police. But he moved his truck and it's no longer blocking. On top of that, I'm woken every Sunday by constant chants and, um, music going down the street repeatedly. I've lived here for four, for years and it, this is, this has been, it's never been this bad in a while. So, um, it's just basically, um, the parking of, some residents are having difficulty with their visitors coming over or even with themselves being able to get out of their driveways because the houses are budding up against the road, um, which allows entrance to these fields.
So, so that street is two-way parking right now. One of the pro- proposals that would deal with that would be to make it one-sided parking. Do you think that's something that they would wanna do?
I think that any, any suggestions that would give some relief. I know, Brian, you wanted to wait till there's a comprehensive parks plan to look at this issue. Um, I think this is a good argument to make, why we need more fields. Because we obviously have overcrowding of the, of, of the fields right now.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, if the, the tool that we have to deal with that is to eliminate the parking in front of those folks' house because it's a public street and people have the right to park there. If you eliminate it, you could paint the curb red, then nobody could park. But that would also apply to the, the residents as well.
The residents.
I would ask Rizzo, what would he, what he would think about eliminating one-side parking, Rizzo?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't think it would be a great idea because now those residents, uh, I've seen some of the residents that park there on the side of the street, uh, near, in front of their homes when I'm visiting the park. So that would eliminate that from them. I think that would really be an inconvenience for them. Uh, but if there's a way to put a signage of parking just for residential, uh, use only, uh, that might be an, uh, an option on that side of the street.
It's just, you could put it, but it wouldn't be enforceable. It's not, it's public, public road is, it's either, you can either park there or you can't. What about, what about, you know, directing staff to, and the PD to go out there and analyze it a little bit and meet up with you afterwards and give you their, their thoughts and suggestions? Because you, you wrote here about violators. I was just thinking it'd be good to find out who's parking illegally and some of that's, that stuff. Councilmember Heiser.
Have you talked to the HOA to find out if, like, to try to get a pulse, a finger on the pulse of what the residents would think about one-sided parking?
I have not, but I know that, well, the HOA doesn't have, um, ability to control.
I just mean like the HOA to communicate with the residents, whereas we don't really have the email addresses of everyone who's a member of the HOA to try to gauge whether or not people would be satisfied with a solution like that.
Well, the, the issue is this is not the first time. So I know this has been trickling over a steady period of time. So this is just the one time that I think it got worse because, um, everyone wanted to use the soccer field that day. Oh, sorry, there are, there are soccer groups that are holding tournaments. And I've, I asked whether we have any, um, contract agreements with the soccer groups that are using it. So as far as what, what the expectations are with, um, using and parking.
Can we get a better understanding of what these permits look like when you have outside companies coming in and monetizing their use of public parks? Is that inconsiderate of me to ask?
Certainly not. Well, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to bring something back to you and we could look at, um, potentially adding parking. And Councilmember Zuniga, that's one of the things that we've been looking at is all the park improvements that need to be made is analyzing what type of parking is at the parks and what's needed. And we could come back with an analysis of how the fields are being used, who's, who's there, the sides of the roads, um, and also the adequacy of parking for what's the type of amenities that are there and just give you a recommendation of how to proceed with that. Um, I don't have all those answers today, but we can certainly take a look at that for you. If that's the request of council, we can bring that back to you. Absolutely.
If, if I could, if I could add, that's pretty much what you're looking at is additional parking space. Uh, because again, if we start looking at the teams that are using it there, they could be local teams. And if we're going to put restrictions on them, then they're gonna go somewhere else, isn't it? And, and I know that we're trying to build sportsplex and things like that, but this is still a public park. I can understand the frustrations of the residents saying that, you know what? It's Sunday morning. I don't want all these people in front of my house.
Right.
But unfortunately, you are in the front of a park that is designated for that type of use from residents who pay taxes to be out there. You know, it, it's just you're in that situation. So it could be like what you're saying, Brian, to look at the area to see if additional parking spaces or a lot, maybe we can actually dedicate a specific lot in front of the park itself. So maybe take the design concept like Steeplechase, how they have their cars in their gravel all the way up front. And it's just a matter of additional parking spaces on that end to help alleviate some of the parking on, on, on the weekends. Because it looks like it's just on the weekends, correct?
I think so. Saturdays, Sundays.
Saturdays, Sundays, yeah.
Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah, two quick things, just for the record, uh, Councilmember Tobias. Uh, I'm fairly certain that these are, these are not city programs. So this is not a City of Kyle program that's run out of this park. This is legitimately a third party. So there's, we can't just work under the assumption that everyone there is a resident, they're taxpayer of the city. Whether or not that matters in the grand scheme of things, but I just, you know, for the record. And additionally, I've heard si- the similar complaints about Steeplechase uh, with parking and people leaving Steeplechase, just a complete.
Oh, yeah.
Trash can and not cleaning up. So I, I think maybe this is something that we should be looking at across all parks. And I'm pretty sure that you said at one point that we were gonna do that. Um, so that's a little redundant. But with that, I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, Mayor, to, uh, direct, uh, the city manager to do a comprehensive review of, uh, parking analysis uh, as well as the permitting around, um, usage of Water Leaf Park.
Second.
And includes Steeplechase?
He's already doing that.
All right, motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Mayor Protem that we direct staff to do a comprehensive analysis of the parking and permitting at Water Leaf. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Harris.
I think we need to run this by parks. I think there's already planned.
Well, the, the direction's vague, so it could include that, that, that process.
Yeah, I think that parking, you know, there's a plan for development of Water Leaf already on the books at parks and it includes parking. So, and we do, you know, if there are leagues that are using our facilities, there is a policy, I believe, for them to be, uh, paying. So, and some do. So maybe we're not finding them, maybe we're not noticing that they're, um, out there. But I think this is already part of our plan and we need to, to come back with that to.
We, we can certainly take it through the park board, give their recommendation as well as the staff recommendation, bring all that back to the council.
Do you have any objection to that? With just that understanding?
No, I don't have an objection, but let's just keep in mind that, uh, these plans are, are plans that are cast out into the future. And the whole reason this was on the agenda to begin with is because there's a problem that residents are experiencing right now. So as long as we're gonna look, we're gonna do all those things that you just said. I'm totally cool with that, but let's not just.
Well, you're not wrong.
The short term on this as well, if we can.
Michael can speak to this. You know, we had the, the Washington Drive situation over there by Simon and Tobias where we made it no parking and then, uh, and then the, the other people who, you know, got mad that we did that, came out and we brought it back and then we brought it back again. So the, yes, it, but the problem didn't materialize overnight is, is the point. And so.
Like, I don't know the, I just wanna, yeah, no.
And Mayor makes a good point about the enforcement part. I mean, are we gonna have cop police out there every Saturday and Sunday handing out tickets for violators when you're on this side, that side? I said, well, I'm here for the birthday party. My house is right over here. We've gotta look at this logically and say, like, you know, what can we do? And I understand, uh, Zuniga, that you're, you're in that specific spot. But I think we've all faced that. Danielle's faced that in her neighborhood. I faced that at South Lake Ranch. Uh, and it's just across the board. When you build parks within neighborhoods, which is great, but these people still have cars. It's not like back in the seventies where everybody just rode bikes and walked there. Everybody drives. So it's just trying to find that solution.
All right, any further discussion? Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hall opposed. All right, motion carries.
Rizzo wanted to say something.
Seven to zero. Oh, Rizzo, you wanna add something?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, next up, Agenda Item 24.
While we're asking people if they wanna add something, can I add something really quick that we missed before?
What?
I just wanted to say thank you to Planning and Zoning for all the hard work that they did on the, uh, comprehensive plan. And we missed that before and I know that a few of us were acknowledging it up here. So I just wanna probably.
All right, you gave your flowers. All right, next up, Agenda Item 24, Consider Directing the City Manager to Provide an Update on the City of Kyle's Plans and Procedures to Follow During Emergency Weather Events in Partnership and Collaboration with Neighboring Entities. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this comes as a, more like a question because of some of the background I have had. I wanna know, how are we documenting or what are the manual of policies and procedures, if we have any, or if we're planning to put anything in place when we are facing emergencies? Especially when we have emergencies like we have had in 2021 and then we had another one in 2023, uh, if we had this snowbuckle lips or if we have icy roads. What are exactly the procedures we follow? And my reason asking is because although so far we haven't had any emergency, um, I want to be proactive. In 2021, I don't know if you were aware, um, part of Plum Creek lost water for a week. And I am really glad I was not a part of the city council, but I know a lot of members in here were part of them. And I wanna know if we had any sort of infrastructural damage and how do we tackle that? So in other words, do we have plans of policies and procedures that we follow? Like preventive, uh, maintenance or any damage control, prevention of damage, especially to our infrastructure? And how, how are we doing that?
We, we do, just to interject, we do have those plans. And if the direction of the council is you'd like us to bring back a briefing, I think it'd be helpful for us to go through all the components. There's, it's, there's a lot of pieces to it. So there are the things that we all see, of course, of the streets. If there's any kind of freezing precipitation of how do you handle that with salt and sand and those kinds of things that we do. There's things that happen at the water and wastewater facilities. There are things that happen, um, certainly with our public works crews, our public safety, all those kinds of things that are getting done through, throughout a winter storm event. We get all kinds of questions about warming centers and shelters and when to open those and where they should be opened. And, uh, there's a lot of pieces to that. And Will and I are working with the chief to put together some type of presentation that will kind of walk you systematically through what we currently are doing and then what any recommendations we might have for you, how to augment that going forward. I, I think there's some things that we have good, clear policy direction from the council and some things that we might need a little bit more from you on when specifically do you want to open warming centers? Where will those be? Uh, what about the shelters? And what's really the data behind that? What kind of demand do we think we have in, in the community? And, and that's one of the things, we'd like to be able to pull that together for you in a way that would be helpful as a policymaker so you can see that and help us understand where you wanna be.
And I like what you're saying, what's the data behind? Because I don't want to be directing staff to open a warming center if we haven't had any requests or in the past, have we had any situation that we have to be, uh, forced to open any warming center? And I know that, you know, every situation may be different. But the other thing was to, how are, if we're partnering with the county, like in the shelter, do they have any warming center? Uh, are people able to mobilize their, like, sand? I mean, we don't, we can get snow very often, but I just wanna be proactive. Because you never know.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about, uh, getting ready for this, um, storm or event, whatever this was this past weekend was.
It was really cold, Brian.
It was really cold mostly, but, um, we don't have a fix for that. But, but Brian, for, for, not Brian, but Brian, that you'd put down for your streets. You saw it on I-35 is being applied to help ice from forming. We don't have an application like that here, but we can put something like that together. Sometimes those aren't used very frequently. You can look at getting a snow blade or a blade that can take off sheets of ice. There are things like that that you can purchase. But we'd like to be able to give that to you so you could decide if that's something you really wanna pursue or not. So if we have an event that you have more of those preparations. So that, that's something that we could put together for you if the council desires it. It might take us a little time to put that together and bring it back for an organized discussion.
Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah, I just wanna say I agree with most of what Councilmember Parsley just said. The one, uh, one thing I would say is that, um, there's no, people don't wanna ask for help, even those in need. So I don't want us just resting on the fact that, like, if we don't know that there are people out there who need help, who aren't asking for it, would it be any different if we just had something available that they could just go without having to ask for help? And I'm just thinking about just the, I've had a couple of conversations with, with some folks the past week about this very subject. And, uh, I would just like us to try to be mindful of that, um, state of mind that some of these folks who might be struggling, uh, what, what that would look like. And then additionally, I just hope that we can learn, that we're actively trying to learn year on year. Because I do know that there were some things that we had talked about last year after this happened. I feel like almost the same time last year, last January. And I just wanna make sure that we're, we're learning from, from that. And there was one other thing, and can I filibuster longer and longer?
No.
Let me stop it.
Come on, come back to me.
Zuniga.
Yeah, so these things always sort of, uh, paranoia, uh, these, um, warming shelters, uh, cooling set, uh, shelters. And I'm concerned that we're using Southside Community Center, which is in San Marcos, as an overnight shelter. So in theory, if we had 15, 20 households that were displaced, we would find a way to traffic or to move them to Community, Southside Community, um, for as long as needed. It could be a week. Um, and we don't have, uh, an agreement with Southside. I mean, we're not funding Southside Community, but it seems like we would be not doing a responsible part.
We do have, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
And so as Barry was saying, people don't like to ask for help. So it kind of, um, makes me feel uncomfortable that I get a perception that there's a bad attitude about helping people. Um, and I don't like that kind of attitude. I think that, like, we should have a donation center for when these emergencies arise because residents wanna donate. They wanna give clothes. They wanna give food. They, they get concerned about other people in the community. So they, they start asking me, Zuniga, where can I go drop something off? And I don't know. I, I, I don't even know what to tell them.
Well, we certainly care about our residents and I don't want anything that, that comes out of this meeting or any other discussion to ever indicate otherwise. We, we do care. Everyone on the staff cares. And we're all working very hard over this past event to make sure people were taken care of and that they were safe. I think the question about shelters is, you know, it, it's an interesting question. Um, if, if you, if the council desires to open a shelter, an overnight shelter, anytime it's below freezing, regardless of the conditions on the ground, we can do that. But we need to let you know what that costs. We need to let, let, let you know where it's going to be and how it's going to be operated. We can certainly do that with the council's direction. We could also, uh, open a warming center anytime it's below 40 degrees, 30 degrees, 20 degrees, whatever that criteria is that you wanna have. And we can give you the options of where it will be located and how it will be staffed and what the cost will be for that. What we try to do in emergency management, working with Will and the chief, is to assess all of the relevant factors to see, is there a condition on the ground and a reason to put those kinds of resources, um, at work? Does it make sense? Is power out? Is there some impassable road? Is there some other issue that's out there that's causing us to feel like people are in danger and there's some kind of issue that needs to be dealt with? And in this past weekend, the conclusion of everyone on our team was that, that we did not believe that there was any kind of situation. This was not the same storm that it was in. kind of situation. This was not the same storm that it was in 2021 when Yuri, or whatever the storm was, that a couple of years ago was not nearly as severe, certainly not as long. Power was, was stable to the entire region, to the community. So, for those reasons, we just didn't feel like it was there. We did have an overnight shelter that was in place nearby. I believe there were 35 individuals from the entire region that went to that facility, so fairly not very well-used for a county of almost 300,000 people. That 35 individuals need to go there. All individuals, if they needed to be there, they certainly needed that help. So, we had options. If something were to change, you have the option, and we have the option, and other opportunities to create shelters here in the city. And we could have done that if the situation had deteriorated. We would have activated the OC. There was all kinds of other elements. So, there's levels of disasters and levels of events that we try to assess. But, I think certainly for the council, one of the things to bring back, if the council wants to have this discussion that we bring back to you, is, is what kind of level do you want to be? And getting some clear policy direction from the council, how do you want to operate? Because every time there's an event, there's all kinds of opinions about what should be done, and what's out there, what the conditions are. And what we're looking for is clear guidance of, when do you want to have these, at what conditions, when? And so, that, that'll be a question we'll be asking you.
I think that's what the, we want to do, is we want to provide, we want to have the data, the options, and to be able to provide that. We don't, I think that's really sort of the impetus of this item. So, you're telling me that that is something that you're going to bring back, but I still think we should memorialize it.
It is, it is, especially because I don't remember the exact event that I was messaging you and you. I think it was the fires that were coming to Ohio. And what I want to avoid is you guys getting bombarded with text messages from all of us, trying to give different directions on what we should be doing, but rather having data that backs up if we were to take an action. And especially something like, you know, in the event of being really cold, how many people have lost power that need a warming center. Don't forget also, most people, like, if something happens to my house, I'm going to call my insurance, and they better take care of that bill. So, I, I don't, I'm assuming most people have rental insurance or home insurance that can also help with that. But, it was, it was a matter of having clear, concise kind of procedures on how do we do it, and when do we do it? And if we are partnering with somebody, at least having that lined out, okay, in these situations, let's reach out to the county before. And then, if we are out of those resources, then what would be step B?
Yeah. I, I agree. I just, I don't want to just jump in, but sometimes it's just about the words. And if we put out announcements that say, be careful, check on your neighbor, check your animals, you know, like, this is what we're, what I mean by a bad, an attitude about not looking, looking down on people that need help or something, whatever, that's, you know, we just want to show more compassion. That's what I'm searching for, compassion. Not that we're on high alert and we have to go to immediate overnight shelter, but, you know, just want to feel like there's some compassion for, for the, for, for the cold freeze, or for the, the heat.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just real quick. I just want to say, I kind of disagree with Councilmember Zuniga about the city showing compassion. During the pandemic, our city went above and beyond to provide food sources, monthly food sources. We went on to, during the early part of that, the PPE started coming out. We started giving out PPE, doing a lot of outreach, a lot of engagement. We also did a lot of notifications. During the freeze, we provided a lot of resources as well, I remember. But, one of the things I'd like to see is not councilmembers going out and looking for these resources, having a list for our emergency management coordinator, that he can come out and get those resources and coordinate that a better than all the councilmembers going out and doing their own thing, right? That is something I'd love to see. Having that list of resources, saying we have a mass water shortage like we had, or we had a mass food shortage like we've had, ice forms, ice events, everything that you can think of. What are the resources that the city will need at that time? And having communication and having those contacts is what I'm going to really push for our emergency management coordinator to have, so that he can coordinate and get these resources to our city. So, that's something that's really important to me. But, I think as a city overall, we, we went through the pandemic, went through the snowpocalypse, and have really persevered and brought in a lot of services. See city staff out there working those lines was really incredible, especially when they're putting their own lives at risk. Because we didn't know what the pandemic was bringing, you know? We didn't know how dangerous it was. And city staff still went out there and helped distribute food. So, I think as a city, we, we definitely have done a great job.
All right, so we want to give the direction?
Do we, I mean, since you're already working on something like this, do you need any direction from us? Or can we just get an update in, in a certain amount of time?
Yeah, I, I think I could certainly bring back, probably at the next meeting, an agenda to go through this, an item that will just summarize these issues, all the things that you guys have talked about, and just walk, walk us through each piece of it and see where you're comfortable us being on, on all the different options that are there.
Okay.
Just, I want to, one thing, hey, when you do that, can you just try to think about how the Uber program can be utilized in instances like that for people? If, God forbid, someone has to go to a warming shelter, that we have this great transportation program that perhaps we can utilize it in moments like this?
I could take a look. I, I don't know if I can be, have a response in the next two weeks, but I'll, I'll try.
Okay, you have 13 days. Thank you.
13 days.
No, the rest.
All right, anyone else?
I, I had responses, but Brian and I already talked about it in email, and we got it all cleared up. And that's my understanding. Again, just one last thing, if we do open up warming centers and we get city staff, guess what? We're going to have to pull city staff to come out there and stay in that cold weather, too. And, you know, we're putting them at risk as well. So, it's just a matter of collaboration and everything. But, thank you, Rachel, for sending all that out. I think a lot of us are just wanting just a little bit of specific details. And again, referencing the email that I had, these were like what you're saying, the residents come to us. They come to us with specific questions, like, can pets come to these, can a library? And is there going to be food and water there for us? You know, that kind of scenario. But, I think you guys are on the right track. So, thank you for that.
All right, anyone else? Motion adjourned?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.